Work session, agenda, October twenty first, two thousand and twenty five, time is now four oh seven P M. Take it away, guys.
All right, yes, sir. So the first item is a discussion to the amendment of the Effingham County Code of Ordinances. This is part two, appendix C for the zoning ordinance, permitted uses in districts, section five point nineteen, on the Ebenezer Historic Overlay District. Let me put that up on the screen for you. So, um, the Ebenezer Historic Overlay District initially would encompass the area from Brookstone subdivision to the Ebenezer Creek along Ebenezer Road. However, we have adjusted that. So if you look at the map that's up on the screen, what it will now encompass is from the east side of the roundabout at Ebenezer and Long Bridge Road to the creek. So based on this map, so where you see that red dotted line, and I know it's a little hard to see, so let me zoom in here. So, this part here, where it is this red dashed line, this will no longer be within the Ebenezer Historic Overlay District. However, on the east side of the roundabout and to the Ebenezer Creek will be within that overlay district. And this will include parcels within five hundred feet of the center line of Ebenezer Road on each side. And then we did also include, which would have been initially this kind of node here, we did keep that semicircle there at the roundabout. So, again, with the help of G I S and working with planning staff, again, to provide that, that map. The overlay district provides specific criteria for parcels within the district. To include, it used to include specific uses that were not allowed, but based on feedback, we did take those out. And let's see, again, the underlying zoning regulations will still apply. However, permitted uses would be, the historic overlay district will allow for business activity, for home occupation as defined in our section three point one five, which is home occupation. And then all other types of home business uses, not expressly permitted herein, shall require review and approval as a conditional use by the Board of Commissioners. And then moving into development standards, again, it shall be up to the Board of Commissioners to consider the district's visual identity when reviewing site design for development and changes to the used structures and sites within this area. All residential and non-residential structures shall be designed to blend into this historic overlay district character. Again, that is at your discretion. So a minimum buffer from the street right away of Ebenezer Road would be thirty feet. There is, I think, the, the longest part of this ordinance, again, would be the signage, freestanding signs, wall signs, window signs, and, you know, again, just general sign standards to keep from there being neon signs, any type of flashing or obsessive signage. And then penalties, we did remove the maintenance, as it would be hard to enforce any type of maintenance standards that are, that could potentially come out, such as flaking paint on buildings, you know, stuff of that nature. Any questions or concerns?
If we refer to the table of permitted uses here, do we have that?
Let's see, so five eighteen one.
Yes, ma'am.
Let's see. So again, so the table of permitted uses, so that's based on the zoning, so the underlying zoning, so whatever the zoning district is, whatever use is allowed within that zoning for that specific parcel. So the table of permitted uses allows, shows what is allowed within that zoning. So A R one, there are specific uses within the table, so I can pull that table up if you would like to see that.
Yeah, I was just curious.
Yeah, absolutely. Let me pull that up for you. One second.
Phil, this is your area, so the intent to leave behind us was to conserve the area as it's presently residential, as it sits right now. With the table of permitted uses, it still allow for home occupation businesses and residential businesses and all that.
Right, it does, and those, so any residential business or home, or rural business, I mean, those are conditional uses. They would have to come before you to get approval. So of course, you know, it would be subject to your approval for the board, so.
And I don't know, just throwing this out to the Commissioners, is that something that we even want to put as an option in this area if we're going to do a historic overlay? If not, why even do it? What's different about this historic area as opposed to?
Do what? Start over, I'm sorry, I was looking for that thing.
So, I believe the original intent was to create a corridor, if you will, to limit, A, some aesthetics, but also to, basically to keep commercial and all that to the minimum in that area, especially concerning signage and all that, so we addressed the signs.
That's right.
But in the T P U, you know, we've got A R one, so we have agricultural business potential, and residential and home occupation potential as well. What about this is any different than any other area outside of the signage case?
I'm not following exactly the.
How is this any typical from another road, for example?
What, where, where it references.
Oh, so I'll tell you, the, the, I would say the differentiation is probably two main things. One is the setback is doubled, right, from the road, but I think the other is, you know, where it predict, where it forbids non-residential commercial usage. So, so you can't rezone to, to business, because that would mean you'd have a use that wasn't non-residential. And so those are the two big ones. Now, it does have the exception that if you have a home occupation, which as a general rule, that's just kind of registering your business at home, which is not a big deal.
But I would not necessarily want to, I was just making sure we were covered on the other part, so maybe I just missed that.
And so the residential home business, you know, again, it still has to go up in front of y'all.
Right, I was just trying to delineate.
You were saying, do you want me to pull that up? What, you were talking about the, in three fifteen, is it, is it three fifteen? Or where did I, permitted uses?
Five eighteen one is what I was referring to.
Yes, sir, I was working on getting that pulled up for you.
Yeah, I had it pulled up too, but I was, okay, what section is that in, do you know?
So, the chairman was referencing five point eighteen point one under table of permitted uses.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I was at three fifteen.
No, you were good. Let me get back to this. And I apologize. Here we go. I believe this is the correct one. And I apologize, I'm looking for our most recent version of it. Here we go. Okay. So, this is our most recent version of our table of permitted uses.
Yep.
And so again, to Tim's point, and I think it just needs to be made more clear within this ordinance, that again, the permitted uses would be, of course, you know, your home occupation and then, of course, your conditional use being your rural business or your residential business, but maybe not your, you know, business districts.
Bs, yeah.
The majority of properties are A R.
They are, yes, sir. Yes, sir, and we can take a look at that zoning map if you'd like to see that as well.
Because we eliminated the little B three that was on the corner of the, by schoolyard, the five, the roundabout. But add a condition to that property on the right hand side corner.
Yeah, when did we, when did we eliminate half the roundabout? I missed that.
I thought it was supposed to start at the roundabout. When did we eliminate?
So that was, that did come out of, when we spoke about this at.
At the last meeting, it was everything on this side of the street is what we talked about.
Okay, I guess I was wronged out.
So here is your roundabout, and I know this is.
What's the use in having half of it, to me? You're gonna, you're gonna come into the roundabout and one half's not gonna be on the other half.
Well, we've already got businesses on that road. We've approved commercial for the electric, daycare, and something else is on the.
No, I'm talking about at the roundabout.
It is this red dashed line. This will no longer be uh within the Ebenezer Historic Overlay District. However, on the east side of the roundabout and to the Ebenezer Creek. Will um be within that overlay district. Um and this will include parcels within five hundred feet of the center line of Ebenezer Road on each side. And then we did also include uh which would have been initially this kind of node here. Uh we did keep that semi circle there at the roundabout. Um so um again with the help of GIS um and working with planning staff again to provide that uh that map. Um the overlay district um provides specific criteria for parcels within the district. Um to include, uh it used to include specific uses that were not allowed. Um but based on feedback, we did take those um out. Um and let's see. Um again, the underlying zoning regulations will still apply. However, uh permitted uses would be um the historic overlay district will allow for business activity. Um for home occupation as defined in our section three point one five, which is home occupation. And then all other types of home business uses not expressly permitted herein shall require review and approval. As a conditional use by the Board of Commissioners. Um and then moving into development standards, again, it shall be up to the Board of Commissioners. Uh to consider the district's visual identity uh when reviewing site design. Uh for development and changes to the used structures and sites within this area. Um all residential and non-residential structures shall be designed to blend into this historic overlay district character. Um again, that is at your discretion. Um so a minimum buffer from the street right away of Ebenezer Road would be thirty feet. Um there is, um I think the the longest part of this ordinance again would be the signage. Uh freestanding signs, wall signs, window signs and um you know, again, just general sign standards. To keep from there being neon signs, any type of flashing or um obsessive signage. And then penalties, we did remove uh the maintenance as it would be hard to enforce any type of um maintenance standards that are. That could potentially uh come out such as flaking paint on buildings, um you know, stuff of that nature. Um any questions or concerns?
If we um see referred to the table of permitted uses here, uh. Do we have that?
Let's see. So five eighteen one?
Yes, ma'am.
Let's see. So again, so the table of permitted uses, so that's based on the zoning, so the underlying zoning. So whatever uh the zoning district is, um whatever use is allowed within that zoning for that specific parcel. So the table of permitted uses allows, shows what is allowed within that zoning, so AR one. Um there are specific uses within the table, so I can pull that table up if you would like to see that.
Well, yeah, I was just curious.
Yeah, absolutely. Let me pull that up for you. One second.
Phil, this is your area, so the the intent to leave behind us was to. You know, conserve the area um as it's presently residential as it sits right now. With the table of permitted uses would still allow for home occupation businesses and residential businesses and all that.
Right, it does, and those, so any residential business or home or um rural business, I mean, those are conditional uses. They would have to come before you to get approval. Um so of course, you know, it would be subject to your approval for the board, so.
And I don't know, just throwing this out to the Commissioners, is that something that we even want to put as an option in this area? If we're gonna do a historic overlay, if not, then why even do it? What what's different about this historic area as opposed to?
Do what? Uh start over, I'm sorry, I was looking for that thing.
So I believe the original intent was to, you know, create a corridor, if you will.
Mm-hmm.
Um to limit uh. A some aesthetics, but also to, you know, basically to keep commercial and all that to the minimum in that area. Um especially concerning signage and all that, so we addressed the signs.
That's right.
Um but in the TPU, you know, we got AR one, so we have agricultural business potential and residential and home occupation potential as well.
Right. Yep.
What about this is any different than any other area outside of the signage case?
I'm not following exactly the.
How is this any typical from uh another road, for example?
What, where?
Other than the designation.
Where it refer- references.
Oh, so I I'll tell you, the the the, I would say the differentiation um is probably. Uh two main things, one is the setback is doubled, right, uh from the road, but I think the other is. Um you know, where it predict uh where it forbids um non-residential commercial usage. Um um so um so you can't rezone to um uh to business because that would mean you'd have a use that was uh non-residential. Um and so those are the two big ones. Now, it does have the exception that if you have a home occupation, which. As a general rule, that's just kind of registering your business at home, which is not a big deal.
But I would not necessarily want to, I was just making sure we were covered on the other part, so maybe I just missed that.
And then, and so the residential home business, you know, again, again, it still has to go up in front of y'all.
Right.
Um but.
I was just trying to delineate.
Yeah.
You were saying, do you want me to pull that up? What, you were talking about the um in in three fifteen, is it, is it three fifteen or where did I? Permitted uses?
Five eighteen one is what I was referring to.
Um yes, sir, I was uh working on getting that pulled up for you.
Yeah, I had it pulled up too, but I was. Okay, what section is that in, do you know?
Um so uh the chairman was referencing uh five point eighteen point one under table of permitted uses.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I was at three fifteen.
No, you were good. Let me um get back to this. And I apologize. Here we go. This is the correct one. And I apologize, I'm looking for our most recent version of it. Here we go. Okay. So this is our most recent version um of our table of permitted uses.
Yep.
And so again, to Tim's point, um and I think it just needs to be made more clear within this ordinance. Um that again, um the permitted uses would be, of course, you know, um. Your home occupation and then, of course, your conditional use being your rural business or your residential business. Um but maybe not um your, you know, business districts.
Bs, yeah.
Right.
The majority of properties are AR.
They are, yes, sir. Yes, sir, and we can take a look at that zoning map if you'd like to see that as well.
Okay, 'cause we eliminated the little B three that was on the corner there. But schoolyard is five of these around though. But add a condition to that property on the right hand side corner.
Yeah, when did we, when did we eliminate half the roundabout? I missed that. I thought it was supposed to start at the roundabout. When did we eliminate?
So that was, um that did come out of uh when we spoke about this at um.
At the last meeting, it was everything on this side of the street is what we talked about.
Okay, I guess I was wronged out.
So here is your roundabout, and I know this is.
What's the use in having half of it? To me, you're gonna, you're gonna come into the roundabout and one half's not gonna be on the other half's. I guess I missed that.
We've approved commercial for the electric, a daycare, and something else is on.
No, I'm talking about at the roundabout. At the roundabout.
At the roundabout?
Yeah, so here's your roundabout.
I think it just was an easy cutoff point.
Well, to me, the cutoff point should be at the beginning of the roundabout. Why? Cause, cause you're gonna sit here and go, okay, I'm starting the historic district here. But I've got a, I can have a, I can have this right here. It's right on the same roundabout.
I could see including four sixty dash forty-eight because it's an adjoining property, or has that been separated out?
Um it, so this parcel here, um that recently was approved, um this will be um separated from.
That's what I thought.
This initial, yes, sir, it will be. Um. So yes, sir, and then, of course, you know, obviously past this parcel here, we have, you know, a higher density. Um this being R six, obviously.
Yeah, I'm not talking about going, I understand that part. I'm just talk, I'm just talking about on the actual roundabout. Is what I'm talking about, you know, I'm not, I understand you've already got all that.
Right.
How that development.
So you're talking four sixty dash forty-eight, four sixty dash fifty-three, and then uh.
It's right on that roundabout.
Yes, ma'am.
That's what I'm talking about, you know, the, because to me, it's just, I don't know, to to me, the roundabout would be where you'd stop, not. Half the roundabout. That just seems sort of strange. And I apologize for not even hearing that the first time. I can't believe I missed it, but.
Is there bigger, big cost in the differences between, is it a huge cost difference in just doing a regular roundabout instead of doing half?
A cost difference to what?
No, we're not, no, we're not talking about.
We're just talking about including that in the historic.
I just wondered if there's another reason why we wouldn't wanna do that.
Well, it does, well, yeah, I think, I mean, also, it's. Forty, four sixty point four eight, I mean, if you wanna do like a, maybe a buffer from the roundabout. Um but then it really limits you on four sixty dash four nine. Because it's such a small piece of property, um and it's already, what is that, B one?
Yeah, B one.
Yes.
Um.
It's conditional B one, isn't it?
This may be B two.
B two? B two. Okay, so.
Yeah, it it does have conditions.
It does, yes, it does.
Yeah, I believe it's pretty much for a daycare facility, if I recall correctly.
And offices, yes.
And offices, okay.
Yes, sir.
If it included that four sixty four nine, they couldn't do anything with it, if it's only an acre of property. They have the, that huge setback.
Which one, four, I'm sorry?
Four sixty forty-nine A on this side of the.
Oh, okay, yeah, or that house, yeah.
Completely limit anything there.
Right.
Well, it's gonna live on the other side.
Reasons why.
Yeah.
Kill that side of it.
I mean, really, what it, and I, I remain kind of consistent on where I was. My concern is you're taking everyone from that roundabout all the way to the river, you're taking their right to petition. Not the right to use it as commercial or any other use, but you're restricting it. You know, I would never support any commercial along there, but I feel like taking their right to even ask, pretty big step. For me, it is. I just struggle with that. Now, as far as design and and setbacks and and buffers and nice, that, I I see, can see that. It's the actual use of restricting it and not allowing even a petition, our board, for rezoning. I just struggle with that, and that's just a philosophical.
Yeah, I would be too.
Um.
Well, I I I just think if we're, if we're trying to say that this is a, an area that that we're saying is is old Effingham. Or to try to say that it's a historic area, then if if you, if you say that you're gonna open though to commercialization. No matter what you do, it's gonna change.
Yeah, but I don't think we're open, I'm not, I'm not, like I said, I, and we've denied plenty along there in the commercial realm.
Right, but that's assuming the same commissions here.
Well, I mean, we could pass it and then.
Right.
Then it could overturn it, repeal it, so I mean, that's really. Um.
But no, I understand where you're coming from, a hundred percent.
Um.
If if I remember the the conversations though, for the most part, that came out of those charrettes that. You know, everybody didn't really wanna see this. They wanted to try to to maintain the same area.
I agree.
Toward Ebenezer.
I agree.
If you were gonna listen to the people that were at those meetings.
And I do whenever, whenever somebody comes and asks for a piece of property to be rezoned, I will answer, I will, I will represent them in that.
Well, I'm just saying.
I think though, there was, I wasn't agreeable for it all the way, at one time, it was all the way out of Ebenezer Road. And I think we just, the, where we could all agree was at the the cutoff at the roundabout. That was for me.
Yeah.
Cause I wasn't gonna vote, I couldn't support it if it came all the way out.
Their concerns were commercial and high density was mainly was.
Yeah.
There, you know, town home high density.
That's right.
Um not necessarily high density, single family.
There was too much of a focus on use, which I think um kind of negates the historic aspect. You could, you can put some pretty bad stuff there approved in AR one that is not, is gonna take away from. The historic aspect. That's where your, your buffers and design standards come in that really um protect it. Um.
So our buffers, according to our new ordinance, is now just refreshing that we're assuming we're gonna adopt sooner than later. On AR one, what are they, fifteen foot?
So from um from the right away would be fifty feet.
Fifty feet?
Yes, sir.
And that was another thing I was gonna bring up, is thirty feet on here. Why, why is, why is it twenty feet?
Yeah, I meant to go back on that.
Yes, no, that would have to be changed. Yes, ma'am, it would just have to be changed.
It was, yeah, cause that's actually lax, that's actually.
It is, it's lax, yes. No, that would need to be changed.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's had me a little confused as well, so, okay.
Okay.
So what, let's break it down. What does this do versus?
What we have already?
Yes.
That was my original question.
It's the uses, it's the uses.
Right.
That's it. Um.
Well, they can still rezone to any sort of um R if they wanted to. Uh R one would be their only option because of uh um uh water and sewer.
Mm-hmm.
Um but the um, but if they were to do that, they'd still be subject to the, what was the setback?
Fifty.
Fifty.
Fifty?
Mm-hmm.
They would still be subject to the fifty feet even though it's um, it's not that in uh in R one. So it just goes, so if you made it fifty feet, you wouldn't have to worry about what anybody did with it, whether.
Potential R one rezoning, I mean, that would be the only. Sounds like the only thing that separates it from the AR as it sits.
Yeah, I've been heavily involved in this one, but uh I kind of thought the purpose of it was not just to restrict use. But to give character to the area, some design standards, make it, you know, something to flow with being a historic overlay district. It would.
We did, we got a lot of pushback from.
How does the sign standards stack up against?
Their purview as a HOA restriction.
Um. And Bluffton and Hilton has been very successful.
Okay.
Doing that and having, you know, they've got shopping centers placed in a way that you can hardly tell they're even shopping centers. Oak trees up front, stuff like, that's kind of what I envisioned this being and not being so restrictive.
I agree with you, Roger, but you're looking at what's already developed versus what's under development. So it's easier to do it while you're going as opposed to reversing it.
What I could go for myself, if we could soften that permitted uses just. To not be a wholesale, you know, uh not allowing somebody to petition, but otherwise, I think it's. And what it does is underline the the the, this board views that as important, so if you're coming up here for that, you better have your ducks in a row. And it better fit with what we want there.
Yeah, that's what I think.
And I, and I have no problem with that.
That's just setting, I, I, it's setting a standard.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm good with that, I'm good with that.
And and if I can bring up another point too, is we have no control over water and sewer extension on that section.
That's right.
Right, so if someone were to, if Springfield were to bring water and sewer um down the road and an R five would have normally been permitted. It still permits the R five, but it creates that fifty foot buffer um for the road, so it does establish something. Um because it's right on the corner, right, uh the water and sewer, and while they don't have capacity right now, who knows what could happen in the future. So it does protect the frontage of the road um uh from any sort of um, uh any sort of develop, uh residential development. That's closer than the fifty feet. Even if it's R five or heck, R three or um R two, townhomes and and um. Uh and narrow houses. I mean, if water and sewer, the only thing restricting them on is water and sewer right now, we don't control it, so.
Right.
Um creating that protected buffer of that fifty feet does, I think, make a difference, maybe not today, but. Um in the future, protects the look of the road.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Yeah, so there's a, there's a lot of this, I I. I just don't know how to. I'm just trying to reconcile that. I mean, what are, what are y'all's thoughts? I know it's not y'all's district, but.
I agree with you.
What if somebody told you, okay, you're, you're limited, there's certain things, your property, you can't come ask for rezoning for. Even though it might get denied, probably will. I've been pretty consistent on that.
So.
Most of the property through there, though, is it really, a lot of it, is it very much still left to develop?
Towards the end of the road.
Like towards the river.
Toward the river.
I mean, it's mostly all residential anyway, correct?
Yeah.
And I'd say the property owners, they didn't wanna hear anything about development. They liked.
That's right.
Where they were living, they liked the, the, the openness, they liked the fact that they're, felt like they were a part of a historic area and. All that kind of stuff, and and I mean, the idea of somebody coming in there and saying they wanted to either put a high density development or. Or even a commercial enterprise, they were.
I agree, I'm, I'm, and I agree with them, that's the, and I have consistently agreed.
What was the purpose, I guess, of ta- us talking to those people? We, we got blamed the other day at the library meeting because we didn't listen to anybody here. So I'm just saying, what, what would be the, the, you know, they say that they would want some kind of, not overly restricted. But something that would protect the area.
Yeah.
So to Tim's point, I mean, with the, you know, continuation of the fifty foot, which was already established on the majority of properties of AR. When do you feel that's sufficient to conserve that frontage of the area? And it, I guess, in essence, does limit some type of development.
Yeah.
As a result.
That's right, that's right, and that's.
And.
That's assuming they were to somehow get a rezoning, and I've been, I mean, speaking for myself, and and I know the rest of the board has kind of supported that same.
And and keep in mind that you can, once you have the overlay district established, right? If we realize something that's a problem, right, the overlay district is there, so we can. Um you know, you can uh establish uh additional criteria. Um without having to affect the entire county, right? So let's say something, well, we didn't envision this, but it is allowed in the overlay district, and you know, that you can just go in there and amend the overlay district.
Yeah.
It's a little easier to kind of uh control this finite corridor um when the, when it's already established. Even though it's not doing that much different than what normally would be, I mean, all we're talking about is uses and and um. And and an increased uh setback if properties were rezoned, right? Because under current standards, you can see they're all AR, so um it really wouldn't affect the um. Uh anybody right now, but if somebody tried to rezone, got water and sewer down there, uh it would protect it.
Mm-hmm. Again, this is just a workshop item, we're not fixing to vote on this. Well, we are fixing to vote on it, but not, not, not during this part. Um.
Unless we wanna put it off, we're still fixing to vote on it or not.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, the.
And we can discuss it a- again, um and again, I I'm, and to be clear, I'm not. Saying that every one of those property owners has a right to rezonate what they want. I have, they have a right to petition and ask. Give their case, you know.
Well, just for moving that restriction, maintaining the fifty foot would seem like it solves everything without restricting.
That's right.
Anything, so maybe do we wanna put it back to Chelsea and them to bring back to us again, um with that? Yeah, is it a rush to approve?
No.
Anything, or?
No, not at all.
But I, I still want to discuss the roundabout too, so.
Uh I will say, on this one, since uh there's no water and sewer uh up there, or there's no sewer up there, there's really not a.
Really not having until twenty-seven, twenty-eight.
Yeah, um a, a threat here.
Okay.
Come on, let's not rush it.
All right. All right, we can address those and um.
Do we wanna leave it on, leave it on the agenda and we can?
Yeah.
Because, just in case some people come and wanna hear, we can explain, yeah, but we can let that item come up so we can kind of.
Okay, good.
All right, number two.
All right, so item number two, um so the discussion to amend um the code for part two, chapter thirty, which is environment, article ten, tree protection and preservation.
Jennifer Rose, planner one, um I'm here to discuss the amendment to the tree protection and preservation proposal that was provided at the retreat. And the additions that were added is section four ten and four eleven. So with that, I'm just gonna jump on in. In section four ten that was added, it is for pre-clearing restrictions and mitigation requirements. So this section prevents premature and unauthorized tree removal before property receives zoning subdivision or land disturbance approval. It targets pre-clearing. Pre-clearing, clearing land in anticipation of and of development and bypasses the tree protection obligations. The goal is to prevent the developers or property owners from stripping land of trees before formal development approval. Protecting canopy cover and maintaining environmental quality. So the development site includes any parcel or connected parcel under common ownership or controlled. That are being prepared, marketed, or modified for construction or sale. Any grading, tree removal, or land alteration is considered development activity. So for enforcement, the tree, tree removal and clearcutting is, should be permitted before approval. Um if unauthorized activity occurs, the county manager or their designee will issue an immediate stop work order. And suspend all active permits until corrective actions are complete. Violators must replant trees at three times, the three to one ratio. Um the inches of the diameter at breast height unlawfully removed or make equivalent payment to the Tree County Fund. This ensures canopy loss is fully compensated. Um for development activity definition, any tree, any removal of trees or topsoil for marketing of future development counts as development. Logging is exempt only if it follows the Georgia Forestry Commission approved forest management plan. So the minimum retention required will be at least ten percent of the original tree canopy. It must be retained or restored through replanting. There's no site that may be fully cleared. The penalties and enforcement violations result in fines of at least a thousand dollars per day. Uh restitution for appraised tree value and suspension of permits. Full restoration and mitigation payments are required before any permits are reinstated. So with this section, it empowers the county to deter premature clearing, ensures restoration of canopy loss. And ensures clear financial accountability for developers. It closes a regulatory loophole that often, that's often exploited during pre-development phases. And that's the conclusion for that section. Any questions for me?
I, I think there's one thing I do wanna bring up, if I, if you wouldn't mind the, um we did speak to the county attorney about the tree fund and also. I, I think there's one thing I do want to bring up, if I, if you wouldn't mind the, um, we did speak to the county attorney about the tree fund and also any sort of these other type of, uh, uh, of, uh, contribution in lieu of, um, uh, type of situations. And so with the tree fund, the concern that we had was, um, uh, that if there's, you know, some sort of situation where, um, uh, it's not feasible, um, for them to be able to, uh, protect certain trees in certain locations, they can contribute to the fund. Um, but the, um, my concern was, well, then the county has to plant trees somewhere. And then we, um, you know, what if we, this gets out of hand, and then we, you, we end up running out of land to put the trees on? And then we have to maintain the trees, uh, and so, um, but then we thought, one of the things that we can do, uh, is also allow it to use for land conservation, right? So if you, if you use the tree fund to conserve, you know, a, a tract of land, uh, you've, you've effectively saved the trees as well, so. Um, um, so we think that it should, um, uh, be much easier to manage that way. Um, because we don't want to actually go in and plant tr- street, street trees in the right of way, then we, um, uh, in neighborhoods, because then we would be responsible for maintaining them. Uh, and by kind of giving us an option of, of, you know, our only option would be to plant it in parks. Um, giving us an option of, uh, of doing some sort of conservation with, with it makes complete sense to me.
Don't we accept ownership of the trees basically when we accept a road and it's in the right of way?
Um, no, it's similar to the, um, my understanding, um, is it's similar to the sidewalks, um, where we put, um, uh, we make the developer agree, uh, that the homeowner associates will continue to maintain.
Gotcha.
That would allow us to fund an arborist for any kind of.
True, that's true, yeah.
And all that as well.
Yeah, and so, um, we can come up with what is proper use of the funds. Um, and tree protection is also hiring an arborist to make sure a tree that is, um, yeah, um, at risk, um, can be, um, can be salvaged.
Or would allow us to use those funds to, to mitigate the problem if it was a sick tree as well.
Sure.
Right.
I mean, that's, that would be my hope. We have to set it up first.
Right.
Um, but it does give us a little bit more options that way.
Gotcha.
Could also use it for, um, like we did in the Goshen Hills, I believe, to preserve that tree. We had to redo the road.
What's that?
In Goshen Hills, where we had to redo the road to preserve the big oak tree.
For circle.
Yeah, I mean, that's a, that's a tree preservation, um, activity, and so, I, it's going to be a separate ordinance that establishes the, uh, tree fund, um, uh, and acceptable uses for it.
Fine and all.
Um, and, but then again, keep in mind, it is voluntary, right? So you can adhere to our ordinance, right? Um, and you don't have to contribute anything to it, but if you, you cannot, or it's not feasible for you, or whatever it is, you know, you're given an option. So what it is, is, um, giving an alternative to a developer rather than basically making the tree ordinance black and, you know, just, uh, you either adhere or, or you're out of luck.
Yeah, here's your.
Now, buffer disturbance, that's a whole nother, we're not one, I include this in.
Whole nother thing. Um, and so the buffer disturbance portion of it, um, I think it has a similar punitive measures on it. Um, but it is a separate ordinance, and, and I think there's a, there was a thought that, you know, once we get all of these changes passed, um, we can look at kind of, uh, cleaning up things and combining, um, certain, uh, open space, buffer ordinance, tree preservation, uh, that sort of things into similar chapters. Um, but, um, it wouldn't change the ordinance, it would just kind of organize them a little bit easier for the public to find.
Yeah, consolidate it all, so, yeah.
Have we incorporated a burning ordinance into this anywhere? I know we were going to look at some of neighboring counties and see how they handle it, but that's been heavily on my radar.
Um, I don't think we've done it in this ordinance, no, um, not yet.
That's something.
Yes.
Of its own.
It would have to be separate. We read, um, uh, I mean, it wouldn't, yeah, it would have to be separate.
I think we discussed doing it, though, because.
Yeah.
Yeah, we talked about it, I just didn't know what the result was, was that.
I get complaints with it, too.
Think of it a fall, kind of under a nuisance category, right, at that time?
No, I mean, y- you do have to get certain, I mean, uh.
Yeah, they'll give you the.
You have to go through the process to, I mean, we do have restrictions in place right now.
Right.
Right, um, but the, um, what it, um, and then some of it, when it's a large enough piece of land, funds falls under George for, Georgia forestry permits. Um, and so, um, and I think we were trying to get through all of this before we started to tackle that.
Okay.
Um, but the, but I think it just comes down to making our local restrictions a little tighter.
Right.
Um, particularly around residential areas.
Yeah, just stay on the loose side of it, because we're, we're doing so much.
Yeah.
This will be interesting. I want to see this one play out. We went from just trying to stop developers from clearcutting to. There's a lot of, a lot of stuff there, so it'll be interesting to see this once we implement it.
Okay.
Uh, the only question I have is, is it says minimum a thousand dollars, you know, so that's at your discretion. I, I, the, the point I guess I'm making is, you have somebody just flagrantly, like, I keep going back to that apartment complex right there, you know? That you dealt with, right there on Goshen, that just flagrantly just ignored everything.
Aren't we statutory limited to the fund?
Can we just nail somebody like that pretty good? Because that, to me, they just decided, I need to do this, or I'm just going to do what I want to do. I'm going to go against the site plan, I'm going to go against what I promised the poor.
Or the person on Old Augusta Road.
Or the.
Or and.
But I, yeah, yeah, you had it there, the ones that's just like, your rules don't matter, you'll slap me on the wrist, but I've got what I want, because.
They even wanted to put a building in the.
Yeah, whatever it was. And so, I mean, can we at least, and I know the stop-work order does hurt them a little bit, but, because, I mean, this can go into our tree fund, like you say, maybe we can buy a piece of land one day or something.
Well, I'm, a- and Lee may correct me on this, I mean, we, we kind of set the fee schedule, but then it's subject, still subject to the magistrate at my, um, and, um, so we can cite them, um, and have a minimum fee, uh, or minimum fine, I'm sorry. Um, uh, but then it still has to go through the manager, uh, magistrate process. Obviously, they just accept it, you know, they, they write the check and, and they move on. Um, but, um, the, that's one point. The other point I wanted to get across was, on the buffer part of it, we didn't just make it, um, like, you cut down, um, you know, three acres of stuff, if you remember, we, we made it.
I, I do remember that.
So that it's kind of, uh, the, the more land you, more buffer you disturb, the more you pay.
Right.
Um, and, um, and in this case, it's similar because the violations are per tree, um.
Which is much harsher. I agree with that.
So, Lee, this is a question for you. Is it possible to, I mean, does, these are civil. Is there a way to frame it as a civil infraction as opposed to having to go through magistrate?
That's where the county ordinance violations, they flow to magistrate court, so that's, that's the.
I'm just thinking of the, the, the picture tickets and all that, you know what I mean? So it takes.
Right, but they're still, they're still will flow to a court, right? Um, it's not governed by, say, this board.
So there is a section, the section seven-point-zero-four for the compliance follow-up period, it actually gives them seven days to comply. So it's up to the county manager or their designee at that point, if they continue cutting down trees, if they just need to replace what they've taken out, then at that point, then that thousand dollars per day violation would take effect.
After we've told them that you have to, this is what you have to do.
Correct.
Um, they, they can't continue to do it, they just have seven days to do what we tell them to do.
Correct.
Okay.
Or at least come up with a plan of action to, to do.
To replace the trees, or if they need to contribute to the tree fund, whatever that may be.
Gotcha.
Okay, so we're going to move on to the section four-eleven, which is the clearcutting regulations. So this section governs a larger scale of tree removal, the clearcutting, and ensures canopy loss is minimized, mitigated, and restored through strict permitting and replanting requirements. The purpose is to regulate extensive tree removal activities to protect soil stability, water quality, and canopy coverage. It complements the section four-ten by addressing the scale and condition of tree removals after permits are issued. So for the definition of clearcutting here, it actually is going to mean the remove, the removing of seventy-five percent or more of existing tree canopy, or the tree's six-inch, uh, DBH, which is the diameter at breast height, or greater within a two-year period. Forestry operations are exempt only if conducted under a valid forest management plan approved by the Georgia Forestry Commission. The, for clearcutting, it is prohibited on lands proposed for rezoning, subdivision, or development before permits are issued. Unauthorized activity will trigger the penalties. For authorized clearcutting, that will be allowed when, only when a tree removal permit and a tree protection plan are approved. Clearing is necessary for infrastructure, and full mitigation is provided through the replanting or tree fund contribution. So for forestry exemptions, the forestry operations remain exempt if the land stays in forestry use. If rezoned within three years of clearing, it becomes retro, retroactively classified as pre-development clearing and is subject to penalties. The violations occur at least a thousand dollars a day, a stop-work order, the permit suspension, restitution for appraised tree value, and delay of future approvals. The sites must be restored at fifty percent of the required canopy, or pay the equivalent tree fund contribution. So the purpose for this section is for the, just to reinforce that the county has zero tolerance for this, for this moving forward, for large-scale deforestation. Um, outside of that, that's all I have, so if you have any questions or comments.
I do, um, just maybe worth looking, because the seventy-five percent could be a lot of timber on, if there's wetland, you know, they're going to leave the wetlands, and really, they've taken all the upland. You know what I'm saying? It, I, I'm just, I just worry about the seventy-five percent is, um.
Not enough?
They could do seventy-four percent and be okay, right? But if there's thirty percent of wetlands, that they're not cutting.
They can clearcut everything.
You know what I'm, I just don't want, yeah.
That's a good point.
So maybe distinguishing.
Do you do it uplands, or do you do it harvestable timber?
What, what if you lower the percentage and made it, the restriction just upland?
That's what I was thinking.
Yeah.
Right.
Um, that, that might be a good way to.
We know our area, I mean, the chances are, most parcels have at least twenty-five percent wetlands now, you know?
At least what's getting ready, what can be built on that.
That's right. But that's, that's my only, it just jumped out at me.
That's good, thank you.
It's a good point.
Good work. Um, and I would say one thing that I do want to point out, because it's kind of, it's very important, because we deal with it all the time, is the three-year requirement. Can you just go over that real quick? Under, uh, clearcutting and forestry?
Bu- before we do that, may I just clear what you were saying for a minute? So, so we're going to agree right now to change it to fifty percent, or we're going to throw it back? And maybe after presenting this tonight, table it, too, till it's gets rewritten?
I thought we said maybe seventy-five percent of upland acres is what you said, right? Or did you say fifty percent of upland?
What I was saying is that if we saying that you have to protect twenty-five percent of the canopy, right?
Non-wetland.
Um, and.
But it can't.
Then, and there's going to be wetlands, right? Then that, a lot of times, that, that's kind of be meaningless, because they can't touch the wetlands. So do you make it say, all right, we, you don't include any wetlands, you exclude wetlands, but do you keep it at that twenty-five percent? It's, it's, or do you lower the percentage because you've now knocked out the wetlands, and it's entirely up to you all? Um, so to say that you've got to now keep, um, uh, since we're excluding wetlands, you've got to keep, you know, twenty or fifteen percent of the tree canopy in uplands only. I, I just.
Because the wetlands are not going to cut anyway, probably.
Yeah, exactly, that's my point, is that.
I don't know that you go backwards on the twenty-five percent.
Okay, you do twenty-five percent of the upland acres.
I think that we're trying to preserve.
Because that's the easiest way to do it.
That's what I'm thinking, I mean.
Twenty-five percent canopy.
It's a lot like how we figure green space, you know, or develop a area.
But you exclude the wetlands, so that, that's out there.
And honestly, it includes buffers, too, right?
Yeah, sure.
So, you know, that's going to, um, you know, that, that's going to help towards meeting that twenty-five percent. Um, won't, won't get you all the way there, but it, it is going to help. But then again, if, if there's, if the buffers are cleared, um, you know, you're, you're going to have to. This is an interesting question, so there really is, if the entire, if it's a piece of farmland and it's entirely cleared, then, then the tree ordinance does not apply at all.
Unapplicable.
Yes.
Okay, I got you, so, yeah, so I mean, that, this is to protect trees, not to replant them.
Long as it wasn't cleared eight months ago, and kind of watermelons in it, and.
Yeah.
To say you have.
Well, and that's where the three years comes in, is.
Do we set a minimum number of trees, since you brought that up about farmland, for example, that qualifies this as pertaining to the ordinance? So is there a, a magic number to say ten trees or more?
Yeah, because.
We can't get into that.
Yeah.
But, but there, there's a way out of it, right? You can just contribute to the fund, right? So, you know, if, if you have a piece of farmland with four trees, you know, you're more than likely allowed, you have to protect three of them.
Three of them.
And so, uh, you know, I mean, so, but, you know, if, if, if that's not practical, then, you know, there's a mechanism that you can use.
They're Bradford pear, they're going to go, it'll be stink.
The only reason I wanted to clear that up is because we're supposed to vote on this when I do.
Yeah, that's right, that's right.
So if we didn't clear that up, that would be that. Question about what we were going to do.
And we can verbalize that in the first reading, and then capture it in the second reading.
Yeah.
Great.
And Tim, regarding your question, so with the forestry of the three years, um, so, let's see. So after the three years, if they go bef- prior to the three years, after they've already cleared it, when it becomes retroactive, so it will just put them, they would be subject to, um, the replanting or the tree fund.
Right.
Contribution, is that what you were asking?
Uh, that's what I wanted to bring up, because it's a big problem with us, where someone will clearcut forest, a prop, uh, forest timber, uh, and, and then, you know, six months later, bring it up for, uh, you know, rezoning. This finally, we, uh, addresses that issue, which is say that if it's within three years, it's just as if you did it, um, you know, after you rezoned.
Right, and that excludes the forestry plan for.
Correct.
Yeah.
It's like a waiting period.
Yeah.
If you will.
Granted, a lot of stuff's not going to go back in three years, but at least it, it does something to pre- prevent that from happening.
Sure.
Um, Mr. Chairman, if I may, since we're getting short on time here. Um, number three, um, which is subdivision regulation, staff will bring back, um, before the board at the next workshop, if that is, um, appeasing to the board. Um, number four, number five, and number six, this is animals, accessory dwelling units, and accessory structures. Those three items, um, they are on the agenda tonight for the meeting. Um, those specifically are just adding the AR-three district to those, uh, ordinances to make sure those are covered. So that is, uh, what those were for, so.
Gotcha.
Just wanted you to be aware of this.
That's just a minor change to it, okay.
Yes, sir.
Good deal.
So we're just going to hold off on number three?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Yeah, and you're just going to bring that next workshop?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Is that going to hold anything else up, or?
Um, I don't believe it should.
Okay. Good deal. All right, well, that's a wrap.
Very good.
You'll take a quick restroom break, and then we'll fire it off.
You take a quick restroom break, and then we'll fire it off.
Yep.
All right. Good evening, everyone. On the call to order, the Board of Commissioners' regular meeting agenda, October 21st, 2025. The time is now 5:07 PM. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Sir, Commissioner Floyd.
Here.
Commissioner Burdette.
Here.
Chairman Ryan.
Here.
Commissioner Deloach.
Here.
Commissioner Helmle.
Here.
And Commissioner Kiefer.
Here.
You have a full quorum, sir.
Ma'am, while you still have the mic, I understand you have someone for indication.
Yes, sir, we do. Um, tonight, we have Ms. Jacqueline Grutzbach, Grutzbach. She's a resident of Rincon and recently retired Senior Master Sergeant with the Georgia Air National Guard's Combat Readiness Training Center. She served over two decades in the United States Air Force as an active-duty aircraft maintainer and guard vehicle fleet manager. She continues to actively serve the community through faith-based initiatives. She is currently a volunteer chaplain with the Sheriff's Office. Jacqueline values opportunities to bring people together in purpose and gratitude, and is honored to offer today's opening prayer. Help me welcome Ms. Jacqueline Grutzbach.
All right, good evening. For those who are willing, please bow your heads. Father, Son, Spirit, hear our joyful noise unto you. Fill our cups, that we may serve you with gladness, as we come into your presence with joyful praise, and bring forth our petitions. May we hold fast to trusting and knowing you, our Lord and Savior, the one who made us, for we are yours. We are the people and sheep of your pasture. Lord, may we remember you this day with thanksgiving, grateful for those you have appointed over us, and giving thanks to you for your wisdom that guides us, as we bless your holy name. For the Lord is good to us, and his loving devotion endures forever, his faithfulness continuing to all generations. Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. Moving into item number five, agenda approval, consideration of a resolution to approve the agenda.
Um, yes, Mr. Chairman and Board members, we have a couple of changes tonight. On page two, under unfinished business, which is item number two and three, related to an application by Suzette Schmitz for a property at Highway Seventeen South to allow for veteran, veterinary services. The applicant has requested to withdraw her application. Moving on to page three of your...
Hold on, we've got some question here. Is this the time where we...
It was withdrawing the conditional use, and...
And that's, and that's conditional use is here in unfinished business, so that, that's why we're gonna remove it. So the AR1 to B3 should be coming up on November the fourth, correct?
That's a separate application for the plant.
Yes, but, but that's the correct application, the one that's coming up next.
Yeah, that's what we have.
No.
On the fourth.
Correct.
That, that's the correct application on the fourth.
I'm sorry?
Okay.
Okay, let's move into the...
One more time, ladies.
November fourth, okay.
Don't you love government?
I'll keep...
Very good. Okay, what was the other?
Okay. Under new business number nine, staff is requesting to remove this item, consideration to approve a contract with ESO for a reporting and data management software for fire rescue.
Okay.
And those are your changes, sir.
Is that coming back before us, or just...
It is not.
Okay, great.
Make a motion to approve the agenda with the noted changes.
Second.
A motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Unopposed, motion carries. Item number six, minutes, consideration to approve the October third through fifth, 2025 retreat minutes, and October seventh, 2025, regular meeting minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve both sets of minutes as presented.
Second. A motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Unopposed, motion carries. Item number seven, public comments. Comments shall pertain to agenda items only. Should you wish to make remarks, clearly state your full name into the microphone before commencing to speak. Item number eight, correspondence. The agenda packet for this meeting is posted on the county's website. Any additional documentation presented at the meeting shall be submitted to the clerk for receipt, recording, and distribution to the board. Item number nine is our consent agenda. This section shall include all routine items from which there will be no discussion. Should a need arise for debate, the item can be moved to the appropriate area of the agenda. Item number one, in consents, consideration to approve reappointing Jack, Dr. Jack Haniason to the Board of Health as the physician actively practicing medicine and accounting. Item two, consideration to ratify and affirm the submission of the Georgia Outdoor Stewardship Program grant application and supporting resolutions for the TruTlin Regional Trail Project. No questions? I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. A motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Unopposed, motion carries. Item ten, unfinished business. Item number one, consideration to approve the second reading of an amendment to the Effingham County Code of Ordinances, Part Two, Appendix C, zoning ordinance, Article Five, uses permitted in districts, Section 5.4, 5.5, 5.6, 5.7, 5.8, and 5.18. Approved first reading, 8/5/2025. Second reading postponed from the 8/19/2025 meeting.
Mr. Chairman, so at the December third, 2024 Board of Commissioners' meeting, the board was, the board charged the steering committee, um, with review and input on the final article of the zoning ordinance. Um, since then, um, staff and the committee have diligently been working to review the residential zoning ordinance. Um, this included R1, R2, R3, R4, and R5. All of the residential zoning districts now clearly, um, include defined intent statements and clarify each district's purpose and intended character. The committee, uh, recommended the R1 zoning district incorporate design standards closely aligned with those of the R5 district, um, along with the addition of a ten percent open space requirement. Um, this represents a notable change, as R1, uh, did not, um, include any open space provisions. There was significant conversation and suggestions for the R5 open space as well, um, with that open space being suggested at twenty-five percent. Uh, furthermore, with the proposed higher open space requirements, the county can promote more thoughtful-designed, higher-density neighborhoods that offer enhanced aesthetic and recreational value, again, while preserving that rural character that defines this community. Um, the R4 is the mobile home manufactured home subdivision ordinance with conditional uses for camper RV parks, and now tiny home subdivisions. Um, that tiny home subdivision within the R4, um, does require that they are on permanent foundations. The steering committee has revitalized R2 and R3, uh, to provide greater clarity and consistency in housing types and ownership structures. R2 is now designed specifically for fee-simple duplexes, townhomes, and what we are calling narrow-lot homes, um, so ensuring individual ownership of each, uh, unit and lot. So R3 accommodates a broader range of housing options, including all that is, um, allowed in R2, but apartments as well. Um, R3, uh, as you will notice, does, um, include your, you will have to, um, approve what that design standard looks like, so, um, you will see more of that. Of course, utilities are required, um, but the design is, uh, more open, as, uh, they will have to bring that for your, uh, your approval. So overall, the zoning districts are more concise, clear, and organized. Um, you will also see that, um, for reuse in, um, R2 and R3, um, it is only required in the common areas, and then you will also notice that in R1, the sidewalk requirement, um, there is no payment in lieu of, so it is only required when there is water and sewer. So for that twelve thousand square foot, um, in R1, which is when there is water and sewer. So, um, the first reading for the R district was approved August 5th, 2025. So, um, if you have any questions, please let me know.
Well, one thing that came to mind today, and forgive me for bringing this up here at the second reading, but I had a conversation with someone, and they, I thought it brought up a good point, but it pertains to our R1 districts and what we are looking at proposing now. You know, our developments like Autumn Woods and Georgia Plantation, uh, they are very nice developments. I don't think they had the open space, green space requirement, but now they had the larger lots, because they had more space. So if we approve how it's written today, I think it might be harder to get those developments with the larger lots, like, like we have. Um, and I don't know if that's, you know, do we decrease that to five percent, um, tie it to the larger lots? I know R1 can have the smaller lots, but if we could tie it to, you know, one acre lots or more, then there would be less of the open space requirement. And I, I know I'm bringing that up in the bottom of the night here, so, sorry about that, but...
I had the same call.
What is your suggestion?
The nicer neighborhoods, we couldn't, they wouldn't fit in.
And there's definitely more, but that, that's just two that, you know, definitely come up to mind, you know, right offhand.
Well, we wanna keep some larger lots. I mean, we've got plenty of these small lots coming, I don't wanna, I mean, I know density's, uh, great for our water sewer stuff, but I, I still like... great for our water sewer stuff, but I, I still like to these half acre and larger lots, and I don't want to put a kibosh on that.
How are you proposing the credit?
So are you just saying exclude that, that they don't have to, they have to meet the ten percent in the, in the twelve thousand and twenty-one thousand square feet, but they don't have to meet it if it's the forty-three thousand? Is that what you're saying?
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yeah, yeah, go right ahead.
So I'm, I'm the one that called on this, so we have a lot of beautiful communities within Effingham County, and- Oh, I'm sorry, Alex Long. We have a lot of beautiful communities in our R one zoning. You know, Silverwood Plantation, Ramsey Landing, Georgia Plantation, Autumn Woods, Saint Matthews Place. We have a lot of nice homes in those communities, but under the, some of the verbiage under the new R one, those neighborhoods will not be able to be recreated, and that's due to some of the green space requirements with the ten percent. My suggestion to the board or would ask that with, I understand it with the twelve thousand square foot lots, those are the smaller lots within the R one, but like your Silverwoods, your Ramsey Landing, those, those communities, and I've got some data on those. On the net, you know, like Ramsey Land is two hundred and twenty-eight net usable acres. So they would be required to now have twenty-two acres of open space or green space. Currently, they have eight, you know, Silverwood has sixteen, where they would be required to triple that. You know, Emerald Plantation has nine, or would require nine, they have three. Saint Matthews has about two acres, they'd be required to go to four. So the, these neighborhoods will not be allowed to be duplicated. So if, if we could maybe put a provision in there that if you hit that half acre lot or more, the, the green space requirement would be reduced or redacted in that. And that would allow you to recreate those types of neighborhoods, whereas currently you wouldn't be able to do that. So maybe a provision in there, in that R one that would allow for when you go for the, a half acre or larger lot, the green space requirement gets reduced, because your green space at that point becomes your lot. You know, when you have a, a one acre lot, I mean, the kids actually have a place to play.
I was going to ask a question.
They have the space, and I think that was the intent. Yeah, I think that was the intent of, of the green space requirement, but when you have those larger lots, they have the room to play. And so we, we want to continue to see, you know, the old builders in Effingham that, that did create some of that product and, and not prohibit those, and, and so that would be my, my request to the, to the board.
So just tossing it out there, like a half acre cut back to a five percent and a one acre cut back to none of green space requirement, does that sound reasonable?
I have a question, Alex. What do you see when you have a one acre lot? I mean, what, what amenities would somebody in a, in a Silverwood or something like that development look for, is it just-
Well, they're looking for the larger lots outside of an HOA. So we get a lot of requests for these communities that are not, you know, we have so many communities that are coming to Effingham with the HOAs and things like that, but we've got people that are looking for larger lots that are outside of an HOA where they can park their boat in their backyard or in their driveway and, or have an RV and have a place to put that. And when you have an acre lot or larger, you can accommodate those types of things. So we get a lot of people that want to come to our county for that rural aspect of it, but the green space forces the density, and then you, then you don't have the capability of that. And so, I mean, that, you know, it's, it's counterproductive to itself, and I know that's not the intent of the R one district, but-
So less than half an acre, we would still have the ten percent?
Correct, yeah, correct.
That's a good point. Do they ask for any kind of amenities when you get some-
Not usually on the larger lots. I mean, I've, I've done some of these pocket neighborhoods around the community where they're, they're larger lots, they're two, three acre lots. They don't have, you know, a clubhouse or whatnot, but they're, that's not what they're looking for. When they're getting those larger lots and that larger home, they're considering their home site their amenity, because at that point they can put in their own pool if they, you know, if they so choose. Yeah, they have, they have the space to, you know, to accommodate that.
And not put a pool house next to the backyard fence?
I still remember, I'll never forget that picture.
On the fence?
I was not associated with that, but I'll, I'll leave that, that comment.
What do we, what do we consider is a reasonable reduction? Should we, you know, accept this?
You know, if you look at the communities and replicate some of those, I mean, five percent seems to be an achievable number with, with those lots. I mean, so I went through and just looked at some of those and off the website calculated the usable space, and that five percent for those, those communities that have those larger lots seems to be the, the factor. I mean, some of them have a little less, but I think five percent is achievable.
You did point five one to one. You would net five percent, and do we, do we go further than that? That if it's one point zero one and up, you completely remove that green space requirement for that area, just throwing it out there for consumption? Or do we just keep the five percent and let the-
Well, my recommendation is the, it's going to be tough to, I mean, first of all, you, we make it minimum lot size, right? So that it's not average lot size or anything like that. It makes it very difficult for us to-
Because I foresee a variance request.
Regulate. And, but I would think that, I mean, we could always see if it's, if it's a problem. I, I think the case of the infill makes a, a lot of sense because, you know, we do have a lot of parcels out there that could be divided into like six or seven lots, which are, you know, with the road, you know, going in there, and it just doesn't make sense for them to-
But it's got to be consistent through the whole development. It can't be like onesie twosies of point four sevens, it's got to be-
Right, it has to be the minimum lot size of half an acre.
Right.
Or, or-
Because the numbers could start moving where they're thinking, well, if I got to do all that, now I'm thinking maybe high density. And that's not, if that's not-
That's what we want to do, though.
Yeah, so you get, does get, I can see where the numbers could flip it.
However, but keep in mind that the restrictions that we put on high density are, are pretty excessive, right? So it almost like, you know, it's two forces that go against each other. Well, they would go to high density, whoa, twenty-five percent, and the design requirements and the streetscape requirements and the street trees, all that kind of stuff comes into play. But I could, but for, but, you know, for that half acre or above, I think it's easily enforceable for staff to, to, you know, easily track that. And then at that point, you know, I think, I think five percent is very easily achievable in any, in any neighborhood with a, you know, a, because you keep in mind, you're allowed to use a detention pond, you know, if it's, if it's, if it's accessible to the, all the residents, you're allowed to use, you know, some of the simple, like a male kiosk, which you're going to have to have anyway. If you put like some private land around it, it becomes, you know, effectively an amenity, and you get multiple credits on that. So I don't think five percent is going to be difficult to achieve. But then again, if it is, if it's something we're not seeing, these, these are going to, we're, we're going to learn and we're, we're going to
Make amendments.
Make adjustments, so.
Well, that takes amendment.
Well, and, you know, with the larger lots, the half acre, one acre lots, I know this is something y'all discussed in workshop, but with the tree canopy, you know, in those larger lots, you're able to, you know, achieve proper drainage, proper stormwater retention without having to clear cut. So, you know, you're, you're rewarding the kind of element that the county wants to see instead of, you know, making it prohibitive. So that's, I mean, that's my two cents on it. I leave the, the decision to the board, but I appreciate your time for letting me come up. Thank you.
Thank you, good point.
Mr. Chairman, Members of the Commission, Mike Vac, we're here representing the home builders. I'd like to draw your attention to an inconsistency within the R five district, I'm sorry, R two multifamily district. Section five point five point one, where you're talking about requirements for town, townhomes, where you're looking at minimum front yard setback, calls for a twenty foot setback for the building with a front loaded garage, and a ten percent setback for a building with a rear loaded garage. If you look further into the ordinance, where I believe it is Section five five four one D, that states that townhomes shall have rear loaded garages. So you're requiring rear loaded when you have a provision that allows front loaded. I would further observe, just from talking to my builders, that when you start requiring a rear loaded garage, then you are actually duplicating or increasing the amount of impervious pavement because you're going to need to have some kind of vehicular access for the front of the townhome itself as well. So we really call that into question, but, and there's a simple solution, and that is you remove the requirement for the townhomes to be rear loaded with the garage on the back. So that is our observation. We would recommend that that particular language be removed so that you don't have that inconsistency.
I thought we left the option for the rear to not necessarily have to be asphalted. Like asphalted or paved?
Well, it's a single lane, one-way traffic. And so, but it, it would be, it would still have to be asphalt because that is where the trash is going to get picked up.
Okay.
And your main road wouldn't need to park, and so you would reduce some-
And right, and so we, we permit narrower roadways when it's rear loaded.
That's, okay, that was the trade-off then, was, right.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, and also there is a provision in the ordinance that if a developer would like to have front loaded, they can ask the board for that deviation.
It's a conditional approval in the R two and R three zoning, and the reason we do that is we understand that while the, that there are going to be cases, let's say the townhouse is back up to a marsh or, or, or a pond or something to that effect, it just doesn't make any sense. So we, we make that provision available, but the default preference of the county would be rear, rear loaded vehicular access. And, and part of the reason is because you don't end up with, with the narrowness that we're accepting for the unit size. I believe the narrowest unit on townhouses is eighteen feet. It, you know, you end up having basically a series of driveways and patches of grass. And, you know, we're, we're-
Yeah, creates a more contiguous green space surface along the frontage of the area and puts it all behind the building.
Right.
Well, I'm a bit confused though, then, because you have a set of criteria for townhomes, which are very specific, and then you have a set of criteria for narrow lot homes, which would be led to believe are two entirely different animals.
That's right.
And you are allowing the difference of having a front loaded garage or a rear loaded garage on the narrow lot. But you're basically not doing that with the exception of an appeal, and so if there is-
Well, not an appeal, a, a conditional, when you do the rezoning, you're just requesting the rezoning to include the conditional, the condition that you, you can have front loaded garages. Now, in the case of the narrow lot homes, we're talking about much, they may be narrow lot homes, but they're substantially wider than a townhouse lot because we're talking about minimum lot size of what, thirty-five?
Thirty-five feet.
Of thirty-five feet, where the minimum townhouse width is, is eighteen feet. Now, of course, they have to have an average of twenty, but even if you were to use that twenty figure, you know, the difference between twenty and thirty-five is, is, is pretty substantial when you talk about spacing out driveways and the, and the aesthetic. So that's why we, we made that exception for, we didn't make an exception, but that's why we treated it differently, is because of the width of the lot.
Sure, understand. So given that, what, what I would ask, what we would ask is that where we're talking about townhomes shall have rear loading garages, to have some kind of language that allows conditional approval for a waiver.
Don't we?
That's what you said.
Yeah, yeah, we, I thought we did that.
I don't see that language in there.
Give us one sec, let's, let's just read through it.
I'll give you.
Because that's what it should have read.
Yes, sir, so under, and I apologize, I want to pull up this section. So five point six point four, and actually, the numbering may be a little different on yours as we, we did have to change the numbering. But letter H, it does say in the event that a proposed design standard deviate from the provisions of this ordinance, the applicant may petition the Board of Commissioners for consideration and approval of such design.
Okay, so we can do that-
Five point five point four in ours.
Okay. However, so that's how we're, we're not putting that as a conditional use in the table of permitted uses, or no?
No.
Okay.
Okay, bingo. Got it, thank you.
And, and actually, you'll find that language very similar in R five that we do when it comes to design standards or anything like that, that they can, that it's the board itself that can permit to deviate from that, from those standards.
And where would that happen, in the site plan review?
Yes.
Okay.
Right, because you can't, you, I mean, unless they know, yeah, site plan review would be when we, when we're planning.
That's logical.
That's right.
All right, very good, thank you so much.
Thank you.
A lot of hard work that went into this, thank you.
Can we make those corrections tonight for the R one?
Yeah, I mean, is there any, any further discussion, or we feel comfortable moving forward with the corrections on the lots?
Reduce the open space requirement in R one to five percent when the aver, when, I'm sorry, when the minimum lot size of the neighborhood exceeds half an acre.
Yeah, minimum like-
Equals or exceeds, or exceeds?
Equals or exceeds, just in case it's not-
Yeah.
But it's still ten percent for less.
Yeah, if it's low, if it's smaller than that.
Do we, do we eliminate it altogether if it's over an acre?
Maybe, I'll say like two point five percent if it's over that.
Well, I think Alex said, you said five was feasible, right, on the one acre?
Yeah, I mean, five-
He said five was feasible.
And like you said earlier, I mean, we'd always change something later.
Yeah, we can always change it if we realize it's, you could put language in there similar to what we're just talking about.
And the language is going to reflect that all lots will be a minimum of X through, okay, perfect.
In R two, we're good on striking the language that was mentioned?
I think we covered the counterpoint to those, so where nothing needed to be changed.
Yeah, it was all covered.
Yeah, it was all, it was all covered. There's a, there's a way for the board to-
I think R one was the only one we had the alteration, which Alex brought before, so. With that, no further discussion, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the second reading with the noted changes or additions for R one.
Second.
A motion in the second, all in favor? Unopposed, motion carries.
Gotta restate those again, you need, need some clarification?
It's over.
Tim said it.
Maybe, it's just starting.
It's just starting.
The hard, the hard part's over with, so.
We need to restate for the record what, what we changed on R one for Stephanie, since you get that in the minutes.
Would you like to read it back, Gus?
Reduce the open space, in R one, reduce the open space requirement when the minimum lot size for the subdivision or neighborhood is equal or greater than half an acre, to, to five percent.
Half acre, right, yeah.
Anything above.
And was there notation for an acre or not?
No, we, we're just putting that for right now.
If it becomes an issue and prevents something, that's right.
I thought it might be a care to have that acre.
We'll variance to that, if we need to. If we see it can be inconsistent, then we can make a change, so. Cool, all right.
When you get to the larger lots, like two acres and above, those can go under AR two, so when you-
Ah.
That's right.
Or AR three.
All right, moving into new business. Consideration to approve resolution number zero two five dash zero three four, the extension of the moratorium on rezoning districts.
Yes, so the, the, automatically, once you approve as part of the ordinance- as part of the ordinance, once you, once you approve the classifications, the moratorium, the way that it's worded ceases to exist. But we are, the one air classification we did not deal with, and it's really just an amalgamation of all of what we've just done, we've just got to combine it all together, is the PDs. So we are asking for an extension, and so we've got two options here. One is to just continue that extension of the PDs, which I think is almost automatic until.
I just have it till the eighteenth.
Yeah, November eighteenth.
Okay.
But then a request by Commissioner Burdette was also to continue the R, the remaining Rs until May thirtieth of twenty twenty-six.
To coordinate with the opening of the Parkway.
So the way we did it is just two options. You have alternative one, which is really just continuing the PDs, and then alternative two, which is, oh, which is continuing the total moratorium for PDs for the entire county, and then, and then all Rs and PDs until November eighteenth, and all Rs and PDs to District Two. So that's kind of the two options you have right there in the, under the alternatives.
And we're legally, we can, I mean, allow a certain section like that? I mean, that was really my own main question.
Well, so, so the basis would have to be, we may have to change the basis of the moratorium. We may even have to rewrite the moratorium because the moratorium was based on rewriting the the zoning classifications, that was the, the whereas part of the ordinance. Now, the case with District Two really has a lot to do with infrastructure construction that's occurring. And so what we could do as another option, if you'd like, is to simply amend it or come up with a new moratorium based on the completion of the infrastructure work.
Infrastructure, yeah. And that's my biggest concern is we've been waiting a long time on asphalt and infrastructure, and it's overbearing, almost all hours of the morning. We used to be able to drive in there freely earlier or later, and you can't really do that anymore. We're under construction with two roundabouts simultaneously on Hodgeville. We're still waiting on a roundabout at thirty in Hodgeville. We're still, got a lot of stuff going on, and we just need some relief through the Parkway at least, and maybe Gateway, anything to get us some asphalt. We've got some alternative way to get in and out of the county on that side.
That's my only question is if, you know, we can still vote whatever down, but, I mean, nothing we approve is going to happen before all that's done.
I understand, but we've already approved some based on that, so we've got some coming out. But what happens is when a builder goes to the bank and says, okay, I want to borrow money based on when we're going up in the Parkway, they can't borrow money based on that. So it's created some problems by doing that. So in this case, we've got so much we're waiting on, and so much has been on pause due to engineering, due to time lapse, due to government bureaucracy in general, we have so many checks and balances. We need some pavement in District Two, we need some infrastructure in District Two before we move on. We don't even know how these traffic patterns are going to play out with the stuff we have, have two thousand coming if we don't prove anything. So we have a lot coming down the pike. And I know we had a workshop about a year ago, and the concept was brought up of, you know, different color zones, red zones, traffic zones, where would be some tough spots to build in. And I think it's even more fair to have something like that for a builder. Then I know, okay, this section of the county is open, I need to target this area. Instead of coming up and going through everything and spending the time and the engineering and everything, just to, just to come up and figure out, we're not ready in that area. I'd rather communicate that more clearly to them, I think it's more fair to them. Hey, these districts are great, right now we're hurting in a certain area, let's pause it for a little longer, focus on some different areas till I can at least get some infrastructure in place. Asking the board and asking respectfully that we can do something to put, at least kick the can down the road till we get the Parkway. The Parkway will help, and then connecting Gateway, that'll further help. Right now, there's, they're really hard to even predict traffic patterns, it's such a mess right now. We anticipated already having a roundabouts in place, we're already anticipating we'll have a lot of other things in place, and it just hasn't happened. And I hear about it every week, I see it every day, we just need a little help in this area.
Mr. Newberry, from a legal standpoint, are we allowed to isolate areas for restriction?
Yeah, I would be hesitant to do a moratorium based on a political district. Like Mr. Floyd said, I mean, they will come up individually, and if there are issues related to either traffic, water, sewer, drainage, they can be taken on a case-by-case basis. It's just kind of hard when you say everything in this district just stops because everything in that district may not be equal. And the other part of this is we've been in a moratorium for a little over a year now. So I would just, I would be hesitant to do that.
Vote it down, we should have voted it down.
Yeah, I know, you could vote the stuff down, but I don't think that's fair to the builder. They think that they can do something, they can bring something to the board and.
Is it reasonable to, I mean, to communicate to staff and just look at this as an alternative? Somebody wants to go specifically in District Two, for example, that they, you know, advise because they're going to have to obviously inquire with staff, you know, upfront. And I agree, we need some type of dashboard that, you know, is there, and we're working on it.
At least some kind of likelihood of, okay, if I'm over here.
Right.
Probably not the best timing, but if we're in a different area, that's good. But, I mean, District Two's the smallest district in the whole county with the most concentration of people. We're not talking about a massive area here, we're talking about an area that's already been built up. Respectfully, I don't think it'd be a legal challenge as long as we got a safety issue, and I think there is a safety issue here. You, we are, it is death-defying to make a left turn in the afternoon when you're coming on Goshen, going on Hodgeville, or from Collicanley making a left on Hodgeville. You're taking a chance. Every time you do that, it is scary, I hate it. And I know other people hate it, and there's been several collisions in that same spot, making that left and people getting T-boned. We need infrastructure, we need some help, and just, I'm not asking for much, it's six months, you know, after we've been down this process and trying to perfect everything, but.
For me, it kind, it kind of goes back to the same discussion I had with the overlay district of not at least giving the person the right to petition, you know, even though we, you know.
I get that, but then.
I know, and I'm trying to stay consistent with.
Spending taxpayer dollars and everything else to hear these, just to say no.
I mean.
I understand, I just, I'm saying our six months is going to make.
I think six months down the road, starting to see some traffic patterns, see where we're going to have problems or not. We're building a huge development on our lane right now, where we're making a new road right through our lane. We don't even know what impact that's going to have on us. We've got the one that's coming up tonight, that's going to be in phase one at the end of Collicanley and thirty. This is what, four hundred, I can't remember how many homes Chelsea was on down the, we just got first phase coming up tonight. So it's not like we don't have anything going on in District Two, we have a ton going on in District Two. Those are just the two that stick out right now. But we're at Forest Haven developing as we speak, just a lot of stuff. And it all hits that same corridor trying to get in and out of the county. And not to mention Port Wentworth, but we have to consider Port Wentworth.
I mean, I realistically have that same problem in the fifth, you know, with dealing, I mean, everything that goes through Port Wentworth.
It's, they're going gangbusters there, you know, we could say, well, that's Port Wentworth, but our constituents are dealing with that traffic every day.
Right on up.
Yeah.
And right now, we've got, I can't think of one improvement we've had in District Two that has alleviated any traffic so far, not one.
And I don't know that we have. Until it's in effect, I mean, we're not going to know how it's going to alleviate the issues. I see your point, I see Phil's point about the, you know, allowing to petition, and I.
You can also look at it as like you're trying to push people on me.
I am. No, I'm just kidding.
Well, they.
Just, but you got.
They're on Beth.
I mean, just looking at, that's a good point, actually.
Because you're going to always agree with whatever you want.
That's right.
That is a good point.
Whatever they want.
Uh-oh, we shot fired, shot fired.
If you're in a different part of that area and you've got options to where I can go eighty to go in, or I can go Blue Jay to go in, and then hey, Hodgeville, at least there's more than one option. Or I can shoot Blue Jay to eighty, or I can, or I can go Blue Jay to twenty-one, or I can come in on my call, or there's other options. But if you're really concentrated in District Two, there's only really one option that people take, and that's Hodgeville. And it's.
When is groundbreaking on some of these projects that have been approved for District Two?
So, well, Jonathan's.
They're clearing at Hodgeville and.
Our lane's coming out.
Just a guess, rough guess.
Gangbusters.
They, right now, currently under construction, and most, most is obviously Hodgeville and Blue Jay, right? Hodgeville and Goshen and Hodgeville, Collicanley is, is under construction, they're doing the utility work right now. Both of those, I believe they have about a year from now for completion. And then, of course, Effingham Parkway between thirty and Gateway will be April of next year. And then Gateway Parkway between Effingham Parkway and Hodgeville will be, I believe we're trying for August of next year.
Okay.
And so those are, there are some other ones that are taking a little bit longer because of their G dot roads, like Midland and thirty and Collicanley and thirty. But, but Midland, I'm sorry, Collicanley and thirty, that one's a little bit ahead of schedule. So they're, they're all very either under construction right now or under contract for construction right now or close to being let.
I would be happy with just May first to get that one way out, and then start seeing what traffic patterns look like and at least get down the road a little bit.
And just to offer the project as well. Just say we did approve something in the next meeting, for example, when would that project actually kick off and start impacting the area? Right.
And we've, like I said.
It's kind of a tough.
But we've done that already with several of them to say, okay, let's do this, and we don't do any certificates of occupancy until we open the Parkway.
Right.
Well, then the Parkway got delayed, so then we had builders coming back, and fair enough, I would too. Hey, I can't get my lawns done because we don't, the Parkway opening is a moving target. And you can't, the bank can't give you a lawn on a moving target.
Well, you know, builder's risk is not my concern.
True, but what I'm saying, we've already done that on Midland, and we've done that off Blue Jay, we did that a few different times to where we've conditioned that upon opening of a Parkway. And so we've already done a lot of that, now I'm asking, just get me down the road a little bit further.
But you know, I mean, straight denial is an option, if the infrastructure isn't there and it doesn't support it at the time.
That's something that we've done.
I know, we could do that, but it's.
Because it's not there.
And rely on staff to basically.
Yeah, I think that starts at a staff level.
Yeah, I would say if we could get the staff to steer them in the correct direction, it would still allow the ability to petition, which is Phil's point as well. I know you want something in concrete, it's just, to Lee's point, we've had this going on for so long.
Could we hear from a builder, what would, what would they prefer? Would you want to petition to get turned down, or would you want to just say, okay, I know where I want to, I can build? I know where I can put my money and my time and my resources.
Anyone, anyone?
Yeah, I mean, what's the preference there?
Find out now.
Alec Metzger, EMC Engineering. So I don't know about, you know, waiting to get turned down, I don't know if it gets that far. So y'all, I've done a bunch of work on, you know, master traffic studies, you've got, you know, future land use plans, got a lot of stuff. So nobody really buys property just.
Will to nilly.
With, yeah.
I agree.
So there's a lot of due diligence, and usually there's some time period involved in them looking at the properties and seeing what can fly. And, you know, now with staff, a lot of the stuff is pre-application meetings. So that's, that's the time you bring up, you know, issues with water and sewer and traffic and drainage, and lay it all out for developers. And then they can make a decision whether they want to roll the dice and proceed with the project. And if they proceed with the project and it gets to you, and you deny it or approve it. But I think, you know, you've got a lot of staff in place, and you've got a lot of this information available. And I know that's, developers just want to know the rules to play by, and they, they want it to be easy. And they, and they want to know, you know, how they come into the county and, and read your ordinance and say, okay, yes, I need to do this, this, and this, and I've got this, and it either works or it don't. And so I, I think y'all have got a, you know, a lot of information that can be shared at the very early, very early stages to help people in that process and, and help the county, so.
And I'd say this in your situation, and they do talk to staff, I would be completely fine with staff telling them to reach out to me directly and have a conversation, you know.
And I've done that on one occasion, and they're still wanting to push forward anyway, I'm like, okay. But that's what I'm running into. It is, but it's come, it's taken up time and county time and everything else.
Mike Vacr, again, for the home builders. I have taken my Funk and Wagnalls and my Strunk and White and Roger's Thesaurus and redacted the word moratorium or moratoria. We have a knee-jerk reaction to this. We would prefer to have the opportunity, as Commissioner Kiefer said, I believe, to if we have a project that we want to get started, to have the opportunity to bring that to staff, to have them look at that. Fact of the matter is, basically, if we started a project today to move forward, it probably would not be at a point where we would actually be moving dirt for that period of six months. But we, we would prefer to not have to wait from a secure position to start working on something six months after today, but to leave that in the bosom of staff and the commissioners on making those decisions if those projects would merit approval to allow them to start moving forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
In any account, if the board will permit, I would like to have a vote on it.
And, and I was actually incorrect, I, it's, the PD, since we never voted on it, automatically gets extended to the, will continue on until October, I'm sorry, November eighteenth. This vote would be a vote for the extension of both just for District Two for PD and for, and for the Rs.
So we have the option to do just the Rs as itself, or we have the option to add in Rogers' moratorium as well.
Well, no, you're, all you'd be voting on is voting to continue the moratorium in District Two, just in District Two until I think we put May thirtieth.
May twentieth.
May twentieth, because it's like a day after a meeting.
And so, uh, but that's, that's what you'd be voting on. The PD is automatically continuing until November eighteenth, um, because that was what the moratorium, moratorium said. The Rs are automatically, once, since you just all approved them, they're automatically removed from the moratorium. Based on the word of the thing. So this would just extend it for District Two until May twentieth. For the Rs in PD.
Commissioner Burnett, we, would you be willing to like, is there a way we can just table this a little bit? I mean, this has sort of caught me somewhat with what Mr. Newberry said. You know, I figured it would sort of be okay. That sounds reasonable. We can do it. And now he's saying he recommends not. Can we table this to the November fourth meeting and, um, I mean, we're still in the moratorium technically till November fourth, aren't we?
Immediately.
I was trying to just have some time. Maybe we could look at. What can we do maybe to try to help some of you and still be legally responsible? And I can't come up with anything right now, to be honest. Is there a way around? Is there a way around this for the moment to have time to look at it?
I'm hanging my hat on the safety portion of it for the legal portion of it, and it's, it's definitely a safety issue.
Well, but we can address that as these come up, obviously.
Continues to get worse.
I mean, Commissioner Burdette, you have the option to make a motion on the floor, and, uh, we can see where it goes, or.
Do that now?
Sure.
I'm not great at.
If there's. Fair discussion, we'll, you know, we'll start entertaining motions here.
I'll make a motion that we move forward with the releasement of the moratorium with the exception of District Two, and that District Two, uh, full moratorium carries on until May the twentieth.
Motion on the floor. Do we have a second? One more time. Do we have a second? If not, the motion dies. I'll entertain another motion.
And I will say the reason, I can't, I mean, I just, I just talked against it in my own district because I just don't, you know, that's how strongly I believe in at least the right to petition, but.
I understand, and I appreciate y'all considering it.
Well, I, I, if anything, Roger, it was effective getting the, the word out, um, you know, of the intent, so it's not, uh, a, a complete.
I can only try.
That's it. That's it. You, you put your intentions out there. All right, so that, that dies on the floor. Very good. Okay. We are now at six oh three.
I'm sorry. Oh, I need a new motion, yes.
What is it? Option?
One or two. Well, option one was the approval of the extension, um, for District Two. Option two would be the denial.
All right, I'll make a motion, um, for option two with the intent that we will look at each request in District Two case-by-case basis and take infrastructure into account on each request. A motion and a second. All in favor? Any opposed?
No.
Let the motion reflect. Very good. All right, now. We're at six oh four. Let's take a five-minute pause real quick, and then we'll move into our planning. Uh, so let's reconvene at. I will just make it even number at six ten. Oh, just kidding. We're going to take a, a brief break anyway. How about that? No planning.
Right, bring us back in order here slowly but surely.
That'll be interesting.
Chelsea, while Stephanie does her coffee, can you read very slowly on new business item number two? Consideration to approve the first reading to amend part two, chapter thirty. Environment, Article ten, tree protection and preservation of the Effingham County Code of Ordinances.
Jennifer Rose, Planner One. Per the amended sections four ten and four eleven that were added to the tree protection preservation proposal and discussed earlier at the workshop. As recommended, additional amendments to be added are amendment to the tree fund to include conservation land. And then also amendment to section four eleven, the definition of clear cutting. Language now to read as clear cutting means removing seventy-five percent or more of existing tree canopy or trees six inches DBH or greater within a two-year period. The residual twenty-five percent must be preserved uplands. Wetlands are excluded. Forestry operations are exempt only if conducted under a valid forest management, excuse me, management plan approved by the Georgia Forest Forestry Commission. And that's all I have. If you have any questions?
Very good. Open the floor, commissioners, if any questions.
That covers.
I'm good. I'll make a motion to approve the ordinances, Ray.
With the noted changes?
With the noted changes. Thank you.
Okay, second.
A motion to second, all in favor?
Aha.
Unopposed, motion carries. Good work. Item number three, consideration to approve the first reading to amend part two, Article three, general provisions, section three dot four, buffers of the Effingham County Code of Ordinances.
Yes, sir. So at the November seventh, twenty twenty-three Board of Commissioners meeting, the board approved an update to the buffer ordinance. Since that time, several developments and circumstances again have emerged that have highlighted a need to amend this ordinance. Moreover, the steering committee focused on the zoning district ordinance, but there was a recognized need to refine this ordinance as well. So the amendments to this ordinance include the following. The intent statement was updated to reflect a more concise purpose for the ordinance. Language was added to address major subdivisions that have a rear or side-facing, rear or side-facing homes, excuse me. They will have a fifty-foot vegetated buffer requirement with the ability to install a six-foot berm. AR three, R two, PD, and I one were all added back to the buffer chart. Language has been added to reflect that the more intent zoning district will be responsible for providing the required buffer. I think there was some confusion about when reading that buffer chart, who would be responsible for requiring, requiring the buffer? And that a vegetated buffer will be required for the railroad right-of-way to residential and commercial zoning districts, and that buffer is at thirty-five feet. An enforcement section has been added specifically requiring buffer protection at a pre-construction phase of the development as well as specific penalties for removing or disturbing the required buffer. This includes a stop-work order being issued, a minimum monetary penalty of five hundred dollars plus an additional five hundred dollars for every quarter acre. This buffer shall be replaced at a density of three times greater than the original required plantings, and then a landscape plan shall be prepared and submitted to staff prior to planting.
The only question I have is the consistency between the tree ordinance and this particular buffer ordinance as far as the penalties go. We're assessing it a thousand per day for one and basically a thousand max for an incident, for example. Is there a way to make those more contiguous to each other?
So we absolutely can. We can make, we can make this, if you want this to be.
To show some consistency.
Yes, sir. Absolutely. We can make it more consistent.
Because I feel like one kind of is married to the other.
Yes, sir.
And I think this one should be more punitive than the other one, really, when you're valuing.
I believe so as well.
I do too.
Okay.
And I think it is. It's just at the, the, there's a little inconsistency.
With the dollar amount. So are you suggesting going to a thousand?
That's, I mean, to make it, you know, consistent with the ones that we just approved.
Use the same wording?
Yeah.
Yeah, that'd be the easiest way.
And is there, is there a per day fee in this one?
Per day on the.
We do give them time to correct.
Seven days, yes.
But the, it is, once they're sighted, it's based on the acreage and then, and then they're given the time to correct, and then I think the penalties start over again.
Okay. So we'll just basically emulate the, the same language as the tree protection. Perfect. That's the only thing I had on. Everything else looks great.
That's a good call.
But I'm only one. Anyone else?
I totally agree with that.
Okay. No discussion. I entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve with the noted changes regarding penalties.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aha.
Motion carries. Number four, consideration to approve an amendment to the Effingham County Code of Ordinances, part two, appendix C, zoning ordinances, Article five, uses permitted in districts, section five dot one nine, Ebenezer Historic Overlay District.
Yes, sir. So, you know, we took a look at this at the workshop, and we did make some noted changes, specifically that buffer from the street right-of-way of fifty feet. I know we did want to talk about, you know, whether we wanted to include the entire roundabout or if we wanted it to just be the east side of the roundabout. So up to the board, if we want to possibly table this or, you know, move it to a further meeting, completely up to you.
Would November fourth, just as an option for table, I mean, that give you guys adequate time or the commissioners adequate time to get your input in concerning this?
Do the second one. The agenda meeting for the November fourth meeting is Thursday.
Right. So that's not going to work.
I didn't hear what she said.
Our, yeah, our agenda meeting for the upcoming meeting is this coming Thursday. So it would have to be not the upcoming, the following meeting, which would be the.
And I will be out of town at that following meeting, and I really would prefer be here.
What about the first meeting in December?
What about the first meeting in December?
That's, that'll work. Yeah, that works.
So move it to December second with that?
December second?
December second?
Sorry.
Okay. All right. If everybody's in agreement, I entertain a motion to table until the December second meeting.
So moved.
Second.
A motion to second, all in favor?
Aha.
Unopposed, motion carries. Righty. Item number five, consideration to approve warranty deed is submitted by Exeter Old Augusta Land LLC to accept infrastructure within Old Augusta Road Industrial Park located off Old Augusta Road South in the fifth district.
Yes, sir. So Shaw Industrial Court is located off of Old Augusta Road South, just north of General Way. Shaw Industrial has completed the road, water and sewer utilities, drainage improvements and easements in Effingham County standards, to Effingham County standards and design, excuse me. The county engineer has inspected the road, water and sewers, water and sewer utilities, drainage improvements and easements, and does recommend approval for that. The minor subdivision plat for the parcels and the right-of-way was signed on June thirteenth of twenty twenty-five. The county attorney has reviewed and approved the warranty deed as well. So if you have any questions, please let me know.
Very good. No questions, I entertain a motion.
I, I do because I'm still learning. So it's been our, we take over road water and sewage and all for commercial properties? I mean, I knew we did it for subdivisions, but this is something we do for commercial properties as well?
We, we do, and we have, and we have been doing. And so in, and I think part of the issue has to do with the, with most important to us is the drainage. But I need you to keep in mind what we, and I'm trying to remember the acronym. This is an industrial road, so they will have to build it to a, and it's not coming to me, a certain standard for that traffic so it lasts the, 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 just as much as a as a county, as a regular county road with, with, with regular traffic on it. So they're going to have to build a road that is substantially more freight-worthy than what we have for, for this particular use.
And they're also contributing an additional one percent in this overlay, correct?
That's true. That's true.
One point four.
And so, and that's actually a great point, is that when we do have to resurface it, that's how, that's how we're going to do it.
So, so they're going to essentially pay for it? Or, or?
Effectively.
I just don't know if it, I just don't know. I, I have a problem with the taxpayers. I can see maybe the subdivisions maybe, but I'm, I just, I hate to see a commercial.
What is your?
They're paying taxes too.
Well, I know they are, but they're, they're also.
What is your typical lifespan of a road? For examples, you're, you're accruing a one point four into a fund that can only be utilized in that particular area.
That's, that's right. And so it's an additional tax that they're charged, right? So it's one point four three mils or something to that effect. And essentially, it can only be used in that kind of triangle where we're being used. So while we are taking over the roads, all the properties within that triangle are, are contributing additional money. In there, it's about seven hundred fifty thousand dollars a year today. When, when these, when these properties get out of, some of these properties get out of pilot and, and other prop, and other properties get developed, it'll obviously generate substantially more than that. So I don't, I can't imagine a situation that we would be using L-MIG or, or general fund or T-Spot dollars to resurface this road when we're collecting just for that, you know, essentially for that purpose, so.
And can only be used for that purpose.
And, and so, you know, we actually do this in, by I sixteen as well and in the OmniTrax Research Forest Track. Not just OmniTrax, but all the, all the industrial around it so that the county is not fronting the dollars, is not paying for the resurfacing of industrial roads, so.
Yeah, we're actually fixing to use some of that money in Effingham Park of Commerce.
Correct. Right. And so that's how we're resurfacing, there will be, and in Goshen Road, that kind of industrial area on the extension, that will be resurfaced with these dollars. So it's actually, it's convenient for us because there are all the industrials located pretty much in the same area where we're able to create a tax district with those boundaries.
Okay, thank you.
But the most important is the stormwater, just that's part of the whole system.
And if we leave it up to private, we know how that, how that, you know, could end up.
I don't have as much trouble with the water and sewer as I do the roads.
The stormwater, yeah.
Yes, ma'am. So to answer your question in short, yes, ma'am, they're funding to pay for their own roads.
Yeah.
Very good. No further discussion, I entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve as presented. Second.
A motion to second, all in favor?
Aha.
Unopposed, motion carries. Item six, consideration to approve an application by Alexine, I'm going to butcher this. Deuf has agent for Quail Preserve LLC, Ray Demott, for a site plan for Meldrum Flex Phase One located on US Highway eighty, map number three two nine, parcel number forty-one E zero one in the first district.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. So the proposed site plan pertains to the development of contractor offices. There are two buildings. Building number one is thirty-three thousand seven hundred and fifty square feet, and building number two is thirty-six thousand square feet with a proposed max building height of about twenty-five feet. There will be a total proposed parking spaces of sixty-three spaces with four ADA compliance spaces. This parcel is zone B three and consists of fifteen acres with about five lots. Three of the five lots are proposed for phase one of the development. A variance to eliminate the required buffers between commercial and AR zoning districts was approved at the November seventh, twenty twenty-three Board of Commissioners meeting. Utility services will be provided as an onsite private well and private septic system. The septic system will be permitted through the, through envi, the environmental health department, excuse me. Jurisdictional wetlands are, are shown and the site, the site lies, I don't know why I'm having trouble speaking, within the FEMA flood zone X. Access to the proposed site is through Highway eighty and does require an encroachment permit through G dot.
Thank you. Any discussion from the board?
See if he wanted to speak. This is pretty much what was shown to us a couple of years ago whenever they got the zoning. And I believe the reason for the variance, that parcel behind it is in a.
Perpetual conservation.
Yeah, conservation easement or something. Wasn't that correct? But it's pretty, I mean, the drawings I've seen is pretty much what was shown a couple of years ago. I don't know if anybody else got any questions, but I think it's pretty straightforward.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's great. I think we need flex space in this area. I mean, not everybody needs a hundred thousand square foot warehouse, so I, I think it's good. And I remember seeing the drawing before. It was, it was nice. Nice building.
The question I have is how to pronounce that last name properly.
I'm Jay Mopin, Mopin Engineering. Alexine works for me. Her last name is Deuf.
Okay, that's close.
She's got young kids, though, so I came in her stead.
Very good. Yeah, I think it's great to have some commercial out that way. That's exactly what we need on that corridor.
I don't have anything else. If everybody's good. I'll make a motion. We approve alternative one.
Second.
A motion to second, all in favor?
Aha.
I'd like to abstain from this vote since I wasn't here, so I'm just going to lay out of this one.
Very good. All right. The record reflecting Ms. Beth's abstention and motion carries.
And I've got to abstain from this next one and the next one, seven and eight. I'm not abstaining. Recuse myself.
Yes, ma'am. All right, moving into item number seven, consideration to approve an application by Jeffrey Waldor for a site plan for Ebenezer Daycare located at eight twenty-three Ebenezer Road, map number four four six, parcel number thirty-five in the fifth district.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. So the proposed site plan pertains to the development of a daycare facility designed to accommodate up to sixty children ages zero to four years old. The facility will consist of an approximate four thousand square foot building with a maximum height of thirty-five feet on one parcel. The projected opening date is June of twenty twenty-six. A conditional use permit to allow the daycare facility within the R three zoning district was approved at the June seventeenth, twenty twenty-five Board of Commissioners meeting. Utility services will be provided by the city of Springfield for water services, and sewer will be managed by an onsite septic system and drain field. The vegetated buffers are proposed as follows. Ten feet in the front, thirty feet on the west side, and fifteen feet on the east side, and thirty feet in the rear. An eight-foot privacy fence is proposed around the developed area. There are no wetlands on the property, and it is within flood zone X. The septic system, again, will be permitted through the environmental health department, and the access to the site is off of Ebenezer Road and will require an encroachment permit through Georgia Department of Transportation.
Is the septic just until capacity is met or they're adequate capacity at Springfield? And the only reason I ask is I go to Jan's gym, and he has a daycare, and he is constantly messing with his septic system just to, to the number of toilet flushes, I'm assuming.
J.C. Helman, EMC. We have talked to City of Springfield. They said they're out of capacity to at least twenty twenty-seven. I'm assuming Jan's gym's field's not working, not working properly. No, this will be, as far as I know, for the foreseeable future. Maybe if the initial field fails, they might talk to City of Springfield because there is already a utility easement that runs and hits this property that there is a City of Springfield sewer manhole in, but because of no capacity, we cannot. We have submitted to City of Springfield. It's already under review in their water. They've already agreed to give us water and under review, already submitted G dot, and it's under review. So we've talked to them. They all allow access for us.
Where, and it's really not our concern. Where's the playground going?
The playground's probably going to go where the secondary drain field location is.
Okay.
Because it's just going to be flat until they need it. It's just a backup, so it's probably.
You just have to move the playground to the primary.
Correct. Correct.
I guess G dot didn't require a D cell, A cell, or?
Nope.
There we go. Okay.
No, it's under the, um, limit on it.
We can't turn out a daycare, can we?
No.
No. We definitely need daycares for sure.
Yeah.
For those who are still having children.
Yeah.
Very good. No further discussion. I entertain a motion.
Thank you. Make a motion to approve as presented. Second.
A motion to second, all in favor?
Aha.
Unopposed, motion carries. Item number eight, consideration to approve a final plat is submitted by Stanley Martin Home, Charles Hamilton, for Brunson Station Phase One located on North Sea Conaway Road, map number four one eight, parcel number two E in the second district.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. So Stanley Martin Homes and EMC contractors have built roads and drainage infrastructure for Phase One of Brunson Station to sell one hundred and fifty-five lots within this PD subdivision. Effingham County will provide water and sewer services. The county engineer inspected all roads, right-aways, and drainage infrastructure that is being dedicated to the county. The development agreement between the developer and Effingham County says that the county will cooperate with the developer to facilitate safe access to the site. Development Services staff has reviewed the final plat and final plat checklist. All documents are in order and consistent with zoning plans and plats previously approved. The bond recommendation has been reviewed and approved by the county engineer for a total of six hundred and one thousand nine hundred and one dollars and sixty-four cents. This does represent ten percent of the total construction cost for this phase. The county attorney has reviewed and approved the warranty deed and infrastructure agreement.
Roger, I'll open it with you.
Yeah, actually, thank you, Chelsea, for sending me this today. I look back, and it, it pretty much mirrors the, the original approval in twenty twenty-two when we looked at the, the sketch plan. Al, is this one you're working on?
Yes, sir.
The only thing we, we missed, and this is neither here nor there, I'm not going to tie you to anything, is we started doing covered bus stops. I didn't know if the builder would consider doing that. It'd be great if you would ask him to do that. It's an added safety feature for kids and get them out of the rain when, when they're doing that. We've been doing that kind of over the, the mailboxes, just to have an area for them to do that. But everything else looked good. They were, they participated with the roundabout changes there as far as monetary stuff goes. I think original, we approved it in twenty twenty-two. It was the original approval for the rezoning. Three hundred and forty units, twenty-four percent open space. Everything was there, so it looked good. Unless I missed something there.
Elic Matzger, EMC Engineering. Now, the development has been per, you know, all the previous breaker, grease. So it's a, a lot of, lot of preserved area, and everything's in order, so we'll.
Big buffers off the highway, extra roundabout for rest of travel, so that's, it was a win for that for sure.
Yeah, there's a lot of wetlands between the, in there, so.
Wish all of them were like that, kind of have them off the, the highway.
Timeline on that roundabout. Harold, how's that one coming?
So, so that one, so we, we have a monthly progress meeting with DOT. So Jonathan is usually on that call or somebody else, staff-wise. So I think we're looking at submitting final plans. Let's see, I think that's going to be toward the end of November. And then looking at, per their sk, per G dot's schedule, we're looking at like fall to end of twenty twenty-six for starting the project.
Pretty, pretty quick, yeah.
Yeah. So originally, because it was a on, on system, large roundabout, they pushed it into G dot's realm in Atlanta. Had to get a project number. Automatically went to a five-year schedule for completion. But because of the developer and the county's partnership, it cut out a bunch of red tape and cut it down to, cut off several years.
So fall of twenty-six?
Yeah.
Somewhere around there, ten to.
That, that was that. I do that with all G dot projects. Good.
That's all I have. Should be a nice development.
Anything from the other commissioners? Nope. I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve the final sketch plan.
Second.
A motion to second, all in favor?
Aha.
Unopposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item ten, consideration to approve Resolution zero two five dash zero three five to amend the fiscal year twenty-six budget.
Good afternoon, Mark Barnes, Finance Director. Uh, this amendment has a number of miscellaneous items. Some of the bigger ones is uh, the eighty-five thousand for the teal house repairs, the hundred and forty thousand for the crack sealer equipment and supplies. Those were originally going to be purchased in last fiscal year, but due to some delays, they're coming in this year. And a carryforward of some funding for the Reddick Field AstroTurf job from last year that was not completed at, at that time and carryforward for some twenty-five thousand for Ebenezer's, the Ebenezer station revamp that was nearly completed last fiscal year, but not quite. Uh, staff recommends approval of this amendment.
Thank you, Mark. Any questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
A motion to second. All in favor?
Aye.
Unimposed. Motion carries. Item eleven. Thank you, Mark. Consideration to approve the service agreement between Effingham County and the Coastal Regional Commission for Transportation Services supporting the senior center.
Good afternoon, Danielle Carver, Procurement and Contracts Manager. And this new contract uh, is to continue transportation services for the Effingham County Senior Center through the Coastal Regional Commission. It provides curb-to-curb rides for our seniors um, to the center and essential appointments. The funding and terms follow the standard program and are covered in our budget, so staff recommends alternative one.
Thank you, ma'am. I'll just uh, provide a little background on this too. The last uh, see, cause Regional Commission, uh, their insurance has come up as being uh, quite expensive. Um, so their coverage has gone down. Um, so they have a fifty thousand dollar minimum that they have to reach before they can even start tapping into their insurance because of the number of accidents. So they've hired a transportation person to try to mitigate that with their drivers and all that, so. It was a, quite a topic of discussion that day. Anywho, beyond that, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
A motion to second. All in favor?
Aye.
Unimposed. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item twelve, consideration to approve a contract with Pond for design services for the Clarence E. Morgan Complex.
Good evening, Trey Wilkins, Project Manager for Capital Projects. Um, yes, sir, this is the um, first step in the process of continuing the design for Clarence Morgan Park Phase Two. Um, this is a Seymour project, and so the way this will work is the contractor, which we are in the process of getting an RFP out to select, will work in um, together with the engineer to take the project from a fifty percent um, status to a hundred percent. Um, the process will include trying to um, do some value engineering along the way. Um, and then, again, to reiterate, the Seymour process will come up with a guaranteed maximum price um, that the contractor will um, work under. Um, but again, we, we're doing this with a water project and we feel like a lot of the projects moving forward will go Seymour, just to have the benefit of an engineer and a contractor working together.
Question, Trey, and that's not on this topic, but where are we at on the Baker Pond um, discussions as far as, was Pond part of that project?
Yeah, we had a follow-up meeting with them the, within the week after the last meeting and um, if you remember, I had three different numbers, three different categories. There was one error that I made, so we moved. It was five thousand dollars, moved it down to the um, the last section. Um, and they will credit that amount back to the county. Um, in addition to that, um, Baker Park, when you come in the entrance, everybody's gonna be looking to the right of the, of the beautiful lake. There's a big green space area that didn't really have anything designed for it. Um, they're gonna design that for free. We're probably not gonna build it right now. Um, but it will be planned out for probably some basketball courts, but they're doing that as well.
Okay, so just for summary, the offering kind was design services for the green space that we have to, to left.
Yes.
In a five thousand?
No, in addition, I don't remember the exact amount. That was probably forty-five, forty-five, some odd thousand dollars.
Yeah.
That they're gonna credit us.
Very good. And Melissa's gonna make sure they design it right. Trey, Melissa?
Thank you.
And we won't have any problems like we had at Baker Pond. Yep. Great.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you for that follow-up.
Yes.
All right. Any further discussion? Not entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
A motion to second. All in favor?
Aye.
Unimposed. Motion carries. Item thirteen, consideration to approve a reimbursement agreement between Effingham County Savannah Industrial Development LLC and Effingham County Industrial Development Authority for the design and construction of the Gateway Parkway Extension from Effingham Parkway to Hodgville Road.
Yes, sir, Lauren Schuman, Engineering Project Coordinator. Um, this item is a ream- reimbursement agreement between Effingham County and Savannah Industrial Development, um, which will connect Effingham Parkway to Hodgville Road and improve access to the Gateway, Savannah Gateway Industrial Hub. Um, the county will oversee and fund the design and construction and the Savannah Industrial Development and Effingham County IDA will reimburse the county up to four point five million dollars based on land sales within the industrial park. Um, and so staff recommends alternative one.
The only question I have is.
For the record, that's on any tracks, if you're wondering who's Savannah economic.
I was curious on this, Tim. Um, I see that we have a fifty percent within sixty days and then it's per develop a acre from there. So how long is that potentially gonna leave us out hanging?
Well, again, we can use um, the uh, we can begin to reimburse ourselves with the special tax district funds uh, on this. Um, and um, this particular section connects area uh, anything east of, I'm sorry, west of Effingham Parkway is considered area four. Um, so um, it connects basically um, Effingham Parkway to uh, to Hodgville. And so any development that goes in there, and I'm, I'm, I believe it's the first fifty thousand dollars per acre comes to the county. Um, and so it, you know, the issue is, are they gonna develop their, how quickly are they gonna develop that area? And we don't know what that schedule is, uh, but we do know that when they start developing that area, um, we will get reimbursed fairly quickly on it. Um, I think it's like, if I remember it, it's two hundred some odd acres.
Yeah, it goes quickly.
Uh, to, to, until we get our money back.
So we're guaranteed roughly, just say, three hundred and seventy-six thousand upfront for the roundabout design and then the sixty days with the one twenty-seven, but we don't have a definitive end date.
No, that, that will be based on the de- uh, the development and, and you know, the whole thing here is we needed this road more than they needed it right now.
Mm-hmm.
Um, uh, it is their obligation to build the road, um, but we are simply front, you know, we are simply fronting it to get it built, but
Okay.
since it's their obligation, they're gonna pay us for it. Um, and so that's kinda how we, uh, how we worked it out.
And sales, the county will be reimbursed within ten years.
Ten years is the total?
Regardless of land sales, yeah.
All right.
I, I want to thank Tim and staff and, and the board for allowing us to do that because it accelerates the connectivity between Hodgville and, and the Parkway a lot earlier than we'd ever had it. So it's, it's a big win. It's a great idea and it's a, it's a, it's a good move.
And it helps um, connect uh, Hodgville with Blandford Elementary.
Exactly.
Without having to go around in a big circle.
Biggest neighborhoods in the county right now, I think, is Blandford, is not Blandford, but Belmont Glen. And you connect that with New Haven. You got two of the major neighborhoods in the, in the entire county. Now we got connectivity to the Parkway and connectivity goes straight into Blandford for the elementary school.
Yeah, and it, it may encourage them to develop that area.
I was gonna say, I may.
The big one was getting, you know, we had waited, could've waited ten years on that road and now we've got it coming quickly.
I just see us.
At least it would be right there at the park.
That helps, D two, for sure.
I just saw four point two million just hanging out.
It is, it's, it's a big, big, uh, big amount, but it'd be well worth it.
Cool. Okay. That's all. Thank you. Any discussion, Jim, lady?
I make a motion to approve alternative one.
Second.
A motion to second. All in favor?
Aye.
Unimposed. Motion carries. Thank you.
I'll step out of this one too.
Beth, you can get your steps in tonight. Item number fourteen, consideration to approve a drainage easement agreement between Effingham County and Lamar W. Davis Jr. as trustee of the Residuary Bypass Trust for property located on Springfield Tusculum Road.
Yes, sir, Lauren Schuman, Engineering Project Coordinator. This item is a drainage easement agreement between Effingham County and Lamar Davis trustee of the Residuary Bypass Trust um, for property, property located on Springfield Tusculum Road. Uh, the easement grants the county a fifty-foot wide, five-point-three acre permanent drainage easement to support stormwater improvements in the area. Um, it improves the county full access for construction and maintenance of drainage, drainage infrastructure which restricts, with restrictions on planting or building within the easement. No payment is required beyond a nominal ten-dollar consideration. Approval of this easement allows the county to move forward with the planned public works drainage improvements along Springfield Tusculum Road.
All right, so can anybody give me the history on this process? So this, we got a surveyor to come out and survey the fifty-foot? Right of way?
I wish I could give you the history uh, on this and uh, Jonathan is out in training today.
Yeah, I mean, I read this and, and this is great, this has happened, but unfortunately, I've got a lot of these outfall ditches that need to be cleaned out across my district and it causes a lot of issues on the dirt roads, but I know a lot of the landowners aren't gonna take the time to do a survey easement.
Right, and so that's what I think.
And go, go through this process.
If I, if I recall on this, that the um, that I believe the property owner approached us um, on it and said he'd be willing to do this, which is kind of the biggest issue that we have.
Mm-hmm.
Um, is uh, property owners willing to provide us um, a drainage easement? Um, and so when it's donated to us, you know, it's one of those situations that we, uh, we try and take advantage of. And so Jonathan shepherded them through this process and I just don't know the exact details of, of the different steps, maybe. Josh, Mike?
Josh Jaeger, EOM. Um, this gentleman reached out to me probably the better part of a year ago.
Mm-hmm.
His story at that time was, hey, the county dug this ditch, the county took care of it, much like a lot of these that we've taken care of. So that's whether it's been surveyed, I, I haven't been involved past that, but that's kinda, I guess, my piece from where this did start for you.
Gotcha.
Elic Madsgaard, EMC, I might be able to answer that part of them. So I believe this is the piece, uh, so we have a surveying task order for on-call service with the county. So at some point, when they decided um, that an easement may be possible, uh, we, we got hired to go out and survey the center line of the ditch and determine how deep it was and, and based on the county drainage ordinance and standards, what size easement would be needed. And so I think y'all, I, that's not on the screen, but I think we did the plat that shows the uh, shows the easement. So that's, that's how you got to that point, I guess.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Like, it's pretty much fifty-foot easement.
Yeah, it looks to be fifty-foot.
Yeah, I don't have any other questions. I mean, this is, this is great. I mean, um, if you want a motion, I'll make a motion.
Sure.
I mean, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
A motion to second. All in favor?
Aye.
Unimposed. Motion carries. Item number fifteen, change order, consideration to approve change order number two to the T-Sploss twenty twenty-five.
Before Beth gets back, can you, we hurry up? No, just kidding.
Yeah.
That's why I didn't leave the room, Tim.
Okay. Get out of hand there, Tim. Okay, now I gotta start over on where I left off. Consideration to approve change order number two to, to the T-Sploss twenty twenty-five Maintenance Resurfacing Project District Three awarded to Reeves Construction Company to include resurface, resurfacing improvements on Tuxedaking Boat Landing Road.
Yes, sir. This change order adds resurfacing work on Tuxedaking Boat Landing. It wasn't part of the original T-Sploss resurfacing list, but it was identified during a field inspection with engineering and Reeves Construction. While we do try to avoid uh, change orders whenever possible, this is, this one is actually a cost-effective way to complete needed resurfacing now while Reeves is already mobilized in the area. If we wait and bid it separately, we'd pay significantly more later due to separate mobilization, uh, material cost increases and contractor minimums.
And, and we're using the same unit um, cost price and essentially it's, this is a sploss project, um, not a T-Sploss project and we were repaving Tuxedaking Road anyway. Um, and so it just made sense to do, um, to ask them to go look at um, resurfacing that parking lot and the ramp and everything. Um, and we already had redone the bathroom up there, so um, it uh, um, would be a very nice asset for the county.
Gotcha. So it's a, instead of a change, it was a value add.
Yes.
That's the proper word, value add.
All right, so first of all, I'm excited the boat ramp will be resurfaced and the lines repainted because the lines are gone. Um, thanks for working with me on that, Tim. But the spot that I'm losing sleep over is the width of the road. Um, the work that was done was good, but I know we talked a lot about widening the road and we had that on the list. And after I've told people it was gonna get widened, it, it didn't get widened. And I'm looking real bad right now and, and I've, I've got a real issue with that. And I, I've had a conversation with Jonathan and I just feel like I can't win on road projects in District Three. He, he said originally they did not, they decided not to widen the road twelve inches on each lane because the lanes are twenty feet. I don't think we've got ten feet on any lane on county roads. I've been on that road a lot. I grew, grew up going to that boat ramp a lot and I heavily dispute that we've got a twenty-foot wide road up there. Jonathan said he's gonna go up there and measure it himself. He hadn't got back with me yet because he said since we're gonna resurface the boat ramp that if they're needed to widen it, um, they would, because I get complaints all the time, you know, when people are coming out with a pontoon boat on the trailer, it's running off the road and the other person oncoming sometimes has to go off the road. And I, I hope Jonathan proves me wrong. Um, I have not gone up there myself. I will, I wanna throw a tape measure on it myself, but while they're up there, I wanna make sure that we did what we said we were gonna do. And I've just told the people that I'm looking into it and before they leave, we'll have a confirmation on it.
Okay.
So.
I'll follow up with them on uh, Thursday.
Okay.
So we just will um, just move forward with this portion, Jamie? Is, what do you, what do you recommend?
Yes, I'll make, I'll make a motion. I just wanted to bring that up, um, because I've had conversations with the, um, the folks and again, the work that has been done, they said i- is really good. They like it. Um, so no issues there, but just, they were expecting the road to be widened and it, it just hadn't been. But again, I could be proven wrong, but I just wanna make sure we verify.
And you're talking about just the Tuxedaking Road?
Talking about Tuxedaking Road, that's correct. Yes.
So, so are, are you saying you wanna add a foot to each side is what you, is, is what you wanna do if it's not? I'm trying to figure out what you're asking for.
Yes, I mean, cause, cause our intent, well, the intent was, and, and what was on the list, um, even for T-Sploss was each lane would be widened twelve inches. Maybe it is widened. Maybe it's wider than what we thought, but.
I'm seeing six point zero one meters according to Google Earth, which would be roughly about eighteen feet-ish, give or take.
Yeah. So, so with that being said, I'm, I just don't think it's twenty feet.
Yeah, so we could do another value add potential layer.
And, and again, what, what I will do since they are out there and adding that much, um, I can do.
You're gonna have to make me add something else to my ban list now besides change order.
If, if it's a change to the scope of the project, um, to do that, I will just tell them to go forward with it.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and then we can just bring it to the board for ratification.
And the other roads.
It's not gonna, it's gonna be below the threshold uh, where I should be able to prove it anyway.
Gotcha.
And it's not as big a deal as the other roads, but this road, I just remember I talked about it a ton of times about being widened just because of the boat ramp.
And it's curvy too.
And, and with the curves, so that, that's why. But with all that being said, I will make a motion to approve this change order uh, for the boat ramp.
And I want.
And I won't even object. Mark that down.
We have a, we have a motion as a second and a non-objection by Ms. Beth. All in favor? Unopposed. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, before you move on to your administrative reports, the county manager handed out some paperwork to you for an item that was postponed from the last agenda.
Yes, ma'am.
Did not make this agenda, is consideration to approve a memorandum of understanding with Brennan Capital Investments for the acquisition of easement and property to construct drainage improvements off Blue Jay Road related to Staffordshire Estates.
Very good.
If we can add that as unfinished business number four, please.
Yes, ma'am.
I'll make a motion to add that to the agenda.
Second.
Have a motion second. All in favor? All right. Motion, it is added to our agenda. And I don't have a formal reading of this, but as explained, this is the Staffordshire Drainage MOU with Brennan Capital Investments for the drainage improvements to Staffordshire. Correct?
That's correct. It's actually a combination of multiple items on there. It provides us an easement from Blue Jay up to the wetlands, provides, or actually provides us right-of-way, and then provides us an easement for the wetlands to keep it maintained so that we will get a much-needed outlet to the drainage system on Blue Jay. And it also actually provides a, the right-of-way necessary for our force-mate installation. So there's multiple benefits here.
Okay. Just a refresher for, for me. Is this, is Brennan Capital Investments, are they subsidizing this in any way outside of this MOU here?
No, they're, they're providing us the, the, the land that we need, and since they're providing it for the force-mate as well, we're going to be able to do the drainage work in-house.
Gotcha.
For the out, just for the, for the discharge part, not for the, they're going to obviously be responsible for the expansion of the detention ponds in phase.
That, that's the part I was referring to. Okay. So this is completely separate from that whole deal.
Yeah, this is just for to get out to Blue Jay.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you. Any discussion? If not, entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
A motion is second. All in favor? Unopposed. Motion carries. Moving into reports from commissioners and administrative staff. Madam Clerk, I'll start with you, just in case you have anything. Do you have anything tonight?
Just make note that earlier today, you received via email the report from EOM for September of twenty twenty-five.
Good. Thank you, ma'am. Tim?
I do want to introduce someone who's new to the team, Sidney Edwards, has joined us as a purchasing agent. What?
Coordinator.
Coordinator. She joins us from Edwards Interiors, and we welcome her here. And I think that's all we got. Oh, and I wanted to congratulate Pam Messler, Melser. Sorry, I got that wrong.
It's Pamela, Tim. Pamela.
Pamela Melser, who was promoted to the Director of Development Services. So I just congratulate you. Two other things. One of them is I want to give a big shout out to someone who I told did not have to come to this meeting because I'm sure she's exhausted, but I don't know. I know Roger was there. But we had our Fall Fun Fest, and so the Fall Fun Fest, if you're not aware, started off as a trunk-or-treat two years ago, and then we hired our events coordinator, Jen Baldwin, to kind of do more with the county events. So last year, when we kind of expanded it a little bit from the trunk-or-treat, we got four hundred people. This year, we got over four thousand.
Wow.
And it was just an absolutely incredible day. It was an incredible time. She did setting CEM up for this, and there was a hot air balloon, everything. And so I want to give a shout out to her on her efforts, and I told her that you better come up with a good way to top this for Christmas. So she's working on that right now. But thank you to her. And lastly, I want to mention that we would like to do a site tour. And so we're going to reach out to all of you and to do a site tour of some of our stuff that we're working on, including Central School, Baker, and the wastewater treatment plant, just so you can see some of these big projects at work. And so just we'll come up with a date that work that accommodates you all and, and, and get you out there to, to see the good infrastructure work that's going on with the county.
Very good. Thank you, Tim. Is that all for staff?
That's all I have for staff.
Very good. We'll start with Commissioner Kiefer. We'll go the opposite way today.
Okay. I don't have much, just one thing, and it may be with, with EOM, and it, and it's, I guess it's my fault. Not a big deal. Now the subdivisions slipping by the hickory knob where Frederick Street and Rankin Stillwell, the intersection. And I'd put a ticket in through Engage, and it got done. But apparently the issue, it was, it was trees that were, were growing out. But apparently, the issue that some of the people were having in there is it was growing over, and they had some boats and RVs that were hitting. And they did, they did trim it back, but I guess they just didn't go high enough, and I should have been more clear.
What was the exact location? Frederick?
It's on Frederick, but Frederick at Rankin Stillwell.
I know exactly.
Yep. Yep. And it won't take but a minute. I, I wish I would have put a note that the height was a concern, but anyway, that's it.
Houston Forest, T H Street. Ms. Beth?
I'll just, what you're saying about Jen, I met her at the, I hadn't met her. I met her at the rodeo, which is probably not the best place to have a tent in the future. And she learned that as well, I think. But, but I, I did, I was out there, I, I was out there at the very beginning of the Fun Fest, and I, I couldn't stay long. But it was, it was great. It was a gorgeous day. They had vendors set up. The balloon was just barely, you know, doing it because it blew it up, but it looked like it was going to be a great day for there. So it, it was a lot of hard work by her and probably a lot of other staff.
That's right. And I, thank you for reminding me because parks and landscape, but Seth played a huge role in getting, and his group in getting that, getting that set up. So much appreciated to him as well.
Did the propane hold out? Because I know there was, wasn't there an issue with propane for the?
We're good.
Okay, good. For the, for the balloon.
It's, it's, it's nice, though, to have that. It's just good for the people. So that's a good thing. That's all I.
Well, thank you, Seth. That explains the side eye you were giving Tim then. That makes sense. Perfect. Commissioner DeLuge?
Yeah, I wanted to bring up about land banks tonight. I'll try to be brief. Land banks can be used to help deal with blighted, abandoned, or tax delinquent properties. This gives government entities a vehicle to address those. There's currently thirty-one land banks in Georgia as of right now. There's a Chatham-Savannah Land Bank Authority and a Statesboro-Bullock County Land Bank Authority. And I think there, this could pay off for us. I've had a real high-level conversation with Tax Commissioner, Mr. Roadwalk. And Tim, if you and the board are fine with it, I'll be happy to kind of spearhead reaching out to some contacts in Chatham and Bullock and just gathering some high-level information. And I'll share that with you and just see kind of where it goes if y'all are fine. Maybe a good option for us somewhere down the road.
Perfect.
Sure.
That's all I got.
Would that be forming like another authority in itself?
Yeah, it would be, it would be some kind of authority, yes.
Okay, great. Commissioner Burditt?
Yeah. As far as, you know, moving down and just doing new ordinances, just don't want the covered bus stops to fall off. Hopefully, we could get that done as an ordinance somewhere.
It actually is in there.
It is in there now. Okay, great, great.
Yeah, I believe it's in R five.
So we just missed, I think it was too early on the other, it was twenty twenty-two.
Right.
Okay, so that's in there. That's great. Thank you. And the other thing was the planning board unfinished business. I think we're still not putting that in the six o'clock addition. If we could look at making a policy for that, because again, people come, they show up, they're here at six o'clock. If a developer puts that off until next time, then it's unfinished business at five o'clock. People can't get here, and it's unfair to them. So if we could look at making a policy change, I'm sure we're going to start getting a lot more of them now. And not that anybody would do that on purpose, but it could be a strategy for having less, less people here when you're putting stuff in front of the boards. That's all I got.
So anything in planning that is tabled that would move to unfinished business would fall under the next meeting, six o'clock.
Yeah. The way people have time to get here because it's a public meeting, you know, every time, so.
Also, well, we've already got restrictions in for they get to table one and we get to table one, right? So that's the limit.
And we can probably, we may be able to put it, was that done via ordinance? When we changed the rules with regard to tabling, that might have been, no, that was rules. That was Board of Commissioners' rules. So we'll, we'll, we'll make that adjustment in the same way we did.
That'd be great.
With that.
Is that something we need to adopt here once it's completed? Okay, great.
I've seen these emails, the emails going on with Jonathan with Cover Bridge out there. Is that still moving forward as it should on schedule? He, he isn't here, but.
Where's Alec at?
Alec's here.
There he is. Yeah, I just want to make sure that's moving forward.
He didn't leave early enough, Alec.
Yeah.
Hung around too long.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'll just keep it pretty simple.
Yes, I'm just making sure things are moving forward.
We are working for them, looking at setting, so we're, we've got a, we're concentrating on three and four to start with, where, where some of the issues were, because it's still got some undeveloped lots and stuff like that on it. So we've set up a model and are working on a preliminary plan to get that addressed. And then we'll roll into some of the other stuff. So we are working for them currently.
All right. Thank you.
Is ultimately the, are you going to phase it into your last phases of it? Like, is it all going kind of tying together at some point, or?
There's lots of stuff going on. It's taking a long time to get there. So we.
I get.
We, so some of them, I believe, are going to be easy. Some, some things will be easy to address where there's no lots and some of the phases that, that doesn't have construction. So those will be easier. Some of the phases that were like phase one, that they really just purchased and didn't have anything to do with, you know, that have developed lots and houses and pools and fences and trees, those are going to be difficult. And so we started with the newest stuff first and we'll, and are working our way through it. So there, there is a, there is a plan, and we're working on it.
Very good. Sorry, sorry to put you in the spot.
About that. Glad you're here. Appreciate it. Y'all remember a couple of meetings ago, Lee Village asked about some signs for slowdown for children or whatever. We don't have those. He asked how, if we could reduce the speed limit in the neighborhood. I think, I don't, I think it's thirty-five out there.
What, what's the neighborhood again?
Lee Village.
Lee Village. Okay, so we can, the issue is in enforcement.
I know. I'm just trying to address the concern.
Yeah, so we, we can, the, the Board of Commissioners can lower the speed limit. But the, the only issue is until there's a formal speed study done, you, you, it can't be enforced by radar, right? It can be enforced by other means, but just not by radar.
Very small, short neighborhood. I mean, I don't have to do a speed study in there.
And so I don't know how often you're going to get speed traps out there where it becomes necessary. But updating the signs and changing it to twenty-five is something we can do.
Yeah. Are there any T-sections in that neighborhood? Because you, we have done, created some three-way stops that's kind of at least shortened the straightaway.
I think there's a stop sign there. It's, it's literally a straight line and then a T, two cul-de-sacs on the end. It's a very small. There's some kids there. This fellow just concerned about the kids and asked if we could, we could put up slow for children, for children, if we could reduce the speed limit.
Is that off of Midland Road?
Yeah.
Kind of circles around ish.
Yeah. And the other thing, kind of on the same, what Phil said a minute ago, had a complaint for somebody with a camper on Hodgville Road right there at, I think it's, I forget the name of the neighborhood, but there's trees hanging over there. It's hitting the top of their camper when they go by. If those could be trimmed up on Hodgville coming down towards thirty. No, I don't think it's.
If ours is done, I want to bring up one other thing. Yeah. You done? You done? Um, the sheriff called me yesterday and just had a request on Mock Road. So if you're coming off Stillwell and headed towards one nineteen and is after that first sharp curve, then right after that first sharp curve, you would turn left into Eagle Point.
Okay.
There's some way we can put a sign before that sharp curve, like blind curve or something? Because I believe it was yesterday, some, there was another rear-end accident right there because people are getting stopped there and they're coming right around that curve, and they've had several accidents.
They're stopping to make the left and then come around.
Yeah. He just asked if there, and I can get with Jonathan, but he just asked if there was some kind of signage we could, well, yeah.
I'd say Alex, Alex here.
Knowledgeable of that.
You the man of the night, tonight.
He came up a little quicker on this one now.
I think they may have just put it up. I saw something that said blind, blind drive or something. It was put up right in the curve. So I just saw that this week. So they may have already.
All right. I'll, I'll be sure to tell the sheriff I got right on that.
Absolutely.
Very proactive on that.
As long as it wasn't Graham, he was after. We're good.
Very good. Is that it, Commissioner DeLuge?
Yep, that's it.
Okay. The only thing I have is I had a discussion with Pamela. And just to simplify the processes of, as we find ordinance violations or things, you know, that are reported to us as commissioners, to go ahead and start the process of, you know, putting these in Engage. I know a lot of us do. That way we have a, a tracking point from that. So it gives us maximum exposure to, to everybody there. And is that?
Well, is there someone speaking? I may need to go to the microphone.
Pamela, could you come up and state your name for the record, please? Thank you.
Oh, Pamela. Okay, perfect.
Pamela Melser. Yes, I spoke with staff, and I've also talked with Ms. Marie Todd. So we can set up a training session for everyone in development services. So we can, when we get phone calls in, if the person doesn't want to put it in themselves, if we ask them to, then staff can go ahead and put it in for them.
Yeah. I was going to ask that, if we had a, just a commissioner login that would kind of, you know.
For, for Engage?
Yeah, for Engage.
I just use my name. I mean.
I mean, I, I use mine too personally, but.
And I'm fairly certain that if it comes in, I mean, we can set it up so that if it comes in from, from certain folks, even if it comes in from, we can make it from county employees who are out on the road, that we can get flagged, that it's, so that we, we know it immediately. Because if you're putting it in, you know, about half the time, you're probably, it's as a result of a complaint from somebody else.
Yeah, all the minor calls to me that I put in after I do a little due diligence myself.
Twenty-nine percent of mine are for people that call me.
Right.
Right.
Of course, I send them a link after I do it so they can.
Right, I do the same as well.
Well, I'll follow, I will, I'll follow up with Griffin on Thursday and find out if we can set that up so all requests that come in from, from the commissioners can get flagged because they're already kind of.
I've just been putting Damon Ron on mine, and they're getting done.
So weird. I put Roger Verrett on mine.
And they're not getting done.
Exactly. Shot down in flames.
Yeah. And Pamela also discussed, you know, setting service level expectations of somebody's to flag for follow-ups. For example, we have, you know, certain code violations that have been kind of put on hold, you know. You don't know. If you get so many built up, you're not going to be able to follow up on those. So you're looking to talk to Open Gov about how we can implement those moving forward.
Warnings about open tickets, open cases.
Right. Because it seems like if nothing's happening, I'm getting another phone call. Thought you put this in. What's going on? So, you know, that type of thing. So.
Gotcha.
Make it a little bit more efficient. Other than that, that's all I got. Make it a little bit more efficient, other than that, that's all I got.
Anybody can call, any of the commissioners can call me too and I'll have you to put anything you wanted to engage for you.
I can't hear that either, but never mind.
My reason, call Marie. I actually drive out and take a picture.
Yeah, I, that's, I, I do a little bit of due diligence myself because I want to go, eh, you know, maybe somebody's just, you know, being a certain way that day. But majority of them's been legit, so, great. Tim, I understand we have a need for executive session, with that, I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session.
I'll make a motion to go into executive session to discuss personnel, property, intending litigation.
Second.
Have motion is second, all in favor? Unopposed, motion carries.